Good evening. Reconvene from closed session, yeah, from closed session. Anything to report? Kim?
The council met in closed session for a conference with the city's laborers negotiators. There was no reportable action.
Okay. Call the meeting to order. Roll call. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Mollson?
Here.
Councilmember Campion?
Here.
Councilmember Lamson?
Mayor Huer? Here. Please join me in a silent prayer followed by the flag salute led by our treasurer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Video statement. This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, May 4th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, May 5th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. Agenda approval additions and or deletions?
I'd like to pull J.3., please.
Anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Presentations. Maria Sandoval to present Police Officer Standards and Training Executive Certificate Presentation, California Commission on Post, to our chief. Chief Stockman.
Good evening, Mayor. Yes, speakers members, thank you for allowing your time on me to be here tonight on behalf of the Commission on Post. My name is Maria Sandoval. I am the executive director of California Commission on Police Officer Standards and Training, otherwise known as the Post, and I am here to present the executive certificate to your chief, Todd Stockman. First of all, a little bit of statistics. Our Post is a state agency. We set the standards for over 608 agencies and 97,000 police officers and dispatchers. For every 1,000 applicants, as a rule, 100 are accepted as police officers. From there, an average of only 90 graduate and even fewer than that complete formation. Even fewer possess the desire or the ability to be a police or sheriff, or I'm sorry, sheriff before you achieve the police. Many Post's basic certificates can be obtained through just by years in service of your career, the basic, the intermediate, the advanced, the supervisor, and the management certificates. Only one, the highest available, is obtainable and has to be earned, the executive certificate. You must have two years in the position. You must possess an advanced certificate, seeks the units from an accredited college. And the hard part is, you have to attend the executive development course, which is a pedialyte course conducted in two separate one-week sessions. Since 1959, since Post has been in existence, which is 59 years, we've only given out 1,641 of these certificates. On the average, we give out 12,000 other certificates a year. So tonight, we're going to offer this one to your chief, which is number 1,632, the chief, Todd Stockman. On behalf of the California Commission on Post, I am honored to present to you, Chief Stockman, your executive certificate. Congratulations.
And believe me when I tell you, that is no easy feat. So, over 59 years, less than 2,000, and your chief is one of those. So, you have a good one here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Say something?
No, I was supposed to say something because I make everybody say something when they come up here when I'm on the other end. So, when I figured out that I was eligible for the certificate, we put in for it and I just asked for it to be mailed to me. And, because I like to give fanfare to everybody else, but for me personally, besides taking selfies and posting them on Facebook, I'm not really into the fanfare. So, but then she, Maria, calls me up and she says, "There's no way that I am just going to mail this to you. I am presenting it. And so, who's your city clerk and give me your number now?" So, I didn't want to argue with her, so I did that. It's only because of the team and the support to the city manager for giving me the opportunity to be the chief, but the police department and the team that I work with every single day, that I think that awards like this or certificates like this can be earned. And so, I just want to thank the men and women of the Galt Police Department for always continually to be there and to support everything that we're trying to accomplish and achieve here for this great city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I just made the worst mistake I could as a husband.
I was going to fix it for you.
Because the other big huge surprise is that, and I didn't know they were coming, but my assistant and my right-hand person, Dana Wilkerson, called up my wife and said, "Hey, you should really be here." So, my wife and my two daughters, Gina, Ella, and Joey, they're all here to support this also. And so, really, in my life, that is the reason why I'm able to accomplish and do the things that I do, just in life in general. So, my wife is my rock and these two daughters, you know, they keep you humble, you know. So, anyway, so thank you.
Oh, and we're honored tonight to have the fire chief joining us for the Consumers Fire Department presentation, 2018 State of the Department. Welcome, chief.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, it's truly an honor to be with you this evening. It's really hard to follow that. I would have introduced his family form, but he beat me to it, so. In all seriousness, it's truly an honor to be with you this evening and having, you know, the distinction to be able to talk about what we're doing within the Consumers Fire Department. As many of you, we've met formally and informally in many capacities, you know, that I'm your fire chief. I work for you. A paycheck comes from a different place, but that doesn't matter. You know, you're, I'm your fire chief in this community and it's bringing that together and finding ways to be able to make some of those connections as we go forward. And what I want to do tonight is just do a little bit of recap of who we are and some of the challenges and the opportunities that we're working through currently within the organization. As, just a little bit of a history, that the Consumers Community Services District Fire Department was created in 2006 as a result of the merge between the Galt Fire Protection District, which was initially established in 1921, and the Elk Grove Community Services, Community Services District Fire Department, which was initially established in 1893. So, at the time, we created, we had eight stations, two in Galt, eight in six in Elk Grove, and we continue to have that number today. Based on time from 2006 to current, we've added one additional unit, one additional ambulance that's currently stationed in the city of Elk Grove, and we'll go through some of the call volume and demographics as to how that decision was made. Just bringing in an understanding, within the Consumers Community Services District, we really have two boundaries. Our Parks and Recreation Department, which represents the city of Elk Grove with a small sliver outside of the city, and then there's the Fire Department footprint, which is considerably larger, making up 157 square miles and currently serving a population of 201,000 people, combined for the city of Elk Grove, the city of Galt, and the unincorporated areas and the areas in between. It's important to note that while that's our primary response jurisdiction in the area we have jurisdiction over, that our ambulances provide, we are the automatic aid providers for medical, emergency medical transport through Wilton, Cortland, Harold, and Walnut Grove, giving us about 362 square mile jurisdiction for ambulance response and transportation. Also, something that's really pretty special in Sacramento County is we operate on what's known as a boundaryless system. It doesn't matter where the call is, it doesn't matter what city it's in, what jurisdiction it's in, the closest units get dispatched. And that's really pretty unique in that we operate this way. And what allows us to do it is that we have a joint powers agreement that creates a dispatch center that's joined between the city of Sacramento, Sacramento Metro, Consumers Fire, and the city of Folsom Fire Department. By all of us coming together and creating one area with one dispatch center, we have the ability to send those closest resources without having to transfer calls or carry some of that forward. Something that I'm truly honored to be a part of, coming to the district four years ago and having been the fire chief for, you know, 10 months, you know, I'm a newcomer. I'm, I've been adopted by a pretty great organization. And a couple of years ago, we went through a strategic planning process and rewrote some vision and mission statements, and it was the men and women, the boots-on-the-ground people, to put this statement together. Many times, we see these mission statements as being something that talk about service and professionalism and prevention and response, and this really goes to the heart of the organization. That goal is to exceed your expectations at all times. And they live that each and every day, and I'm surprised each and every day when I hear their stories of what these people do, from stopping on the way home to change a tire, to taking people's groceries home, to finish mowing lawns, to finish car repairs on, for a call that we went out on a medical aid. These happen nearly daily. And where it's such a piece of the culture, is that as the fire chief of the department, I don't hear about him for two or three months later because, you know, as they told me one day, "Boss, that's what we do." And it's really a pretty special place. By not having to grow up in here, I can boast for them. I'm not boasting about myself. It's really a pretty special group of men and women. So, where we find ourselves as an organization, just giving you an indicator that over the past several years, we're experiencing about a 7.7% overall call volume increase. In 2017, we had 19,000, we ran 19,775 calls and were projected to hit just over 21,000 this year based on that trend. And this is total call volume, and we'll get into breakdown a little bit more in a minute. This gives you an idea of that incident distribution and where those calls are, you know, most of which are within the populated areas as we would expect. We also run a fair number of calls out in the open areas, which is obviously a greater challenge. We don't have, you know, stations or units placed in those areas, and so it's a joint response between the units in Galt and the units in Elk Grove to meet in the middle and cover that ground. For the city of Galt, this is a breakdown of our call volume in 2017. That, of the total call volume within the city of Galt, 16,000, or 1,697 calls were medicals. We ran 40, we had 43 fire-related calls within the city, and this ranges from, you know, a trash can fire all the way through structure fire, vehicle fires, all of those, and this is within the city limits of Galt itself. 41 hazardous conditions for service calls. This is, you know, helping somebody lock out, those types of things, 164. 120 good intent calls, meaning somebody called, but there was nothing found upon arrival or the incident was just no longer in existence upon arrival. 139 false alarms. We had one severe weather, natural disaster, and, you know, we just had a little bit of water last year in January and February and only had one major incident that overlapped the city because it ran for multiple days. And then nine special incident types would truly just fall out of many others, such as law enforcement assistance, some other types of calls. So, just giving you an indicator of some of the types of calls we want, run in and around the city of Galt. So, our response time criteria is to arrive on scene within seven minutes, 90% of the time from the receipt of the 911 call. And in 2016, we hit it 91.25%. In 2017, we are at 86.5%. Obviously, that's not where we want to be, but as I'll talk about it in a little bit with some of the growth and the time over distance issues, this is ultimately what the result becomes because you have to go farther to get to some of the calls that you're going to, and what are we doing to work on it. Most notably, and I think are some of our biggest challenges as we move forward, is the increase of EMS call volume we've seen in recent years. Subsequent to the implementation of the Affordable Care Act, our call volume in EMS realm has gone up exponentially. As you'll see in a later slide, that over the past five years, our call volume has gone up nearly 35%, but the growth, population growth within the district boundaries has only gone up by 5%. So, it's a disproportionate increase in that call volume, a greater reliance on 911 for things that necessarily weren't used as 911 before. But with that increase in the ambulance calls and the EMS calls, it's become really, I mean, that's really the focus of what we do. Do we have, you know, highly trained paramedics on all of our resources? We provide some of the highest level of care, and I'm pleased to say, going to any of the hospitals and you talk about their interactions and workings with our paramedics, really pretty special group of men and women. Again, not about me, this is about those people that are on the ground every day answering the calls. Unit hour utilization is one of our challenge pieces because the key to it is how many calls can a unit run in a 24-hour period? And the key to it is really how busy they are. It's not about volume because calls have different lengths. So, an ambulance in Galt wouldn't need to run as many calls as a unit in the north end of Elk Grove to have the same impact because transports from Galt to Kaiser South are going to be much longer and take up more time than the unit out of, you know, Sheldon going to Kaiser South where you have a 10-minute transport time and a much shorter turnaround. So, these are the numbers that we look at, and, you know, the challenge we're seeing during the day is that 30 to 35% is the maximum unit hour utilization those units are able to do and meet fire prevention and training requirements and all the other things that we're required to do. And now, we're seeing some of our ambulances sit up in the mid-40s and 46s, and we're paying attention to those closely and working to that balance. We've been very fortunate that once upon a time, there was plenty of financial resources in the area that allow us to staff a little bit heavy, so we've been able to absorb this call volume, but we're obviously getting to the peak of what we're able to absorb and the need to continue to grow and move forward. Some of the work that we've accomplished over the last couple of years is securing an additional $2 million for new EMS revenue and finding means to be able to increase that cost recovery. As a government entity, we are not allowed to make profit. We can only recover costs of, based on what we actually, cost to provide the service. But being able to secure that is improving Medicare and Medi-Cal reimbursement rates, which are greatly limited. In the middle of last year, we received a SAFER grant, which is a FEMA grant that allows us to hire firefighters, which we were able to restore eight firefighter positions we lost during the recession. We currently have an academy of 21 people going now, and if you follow us on Facebook, they do an amazing job every week of pushing out new videos of what the recruits are up to. And so, 21 men and women in there, you know, push-ups, sit-ups, stretching, running to start the day off, and then throwing ladders till they can't raise their arms anymore. So, it's a, it's a, going through the indoctrination of really working, by the end, they come out of the 22-week academy, they'll be journey, you know, entry-level, but fully versed, fully trained, capable firefighters that'll be hitting the ground in the middle of August. And make sure you get the information on that graduation because we'd love to invite you to become a part of that. We added additional medic, as I mentioned earlier. We've gone through a number of planning processes. We've qualified our board adopted response time, which I talked about before, and working to really, you know, overcome some of the single points of failure that resulted as we went from a small, small-town, small-community organization to one that's running 20,000 calls a year. Before, you could have one person do it or handle what you had to go to do on daily basis with a three-by-five card, three-by-five index card in your pocket, and that's just not the world we're in anymore. Some of our planning that we've done, doing a number of things, working to really try to set ourselves up for success as an organization. The standards of cover, make sure we have the adequate resources we need to respond to the calls, and being able to project out and forecast out to make sure that new station locations are set up appropriately. And then looking at our organization as a whole and really doing assessments on each of the functional areas to make sure that we're as efficient and effective as we can be to meet the needs of the community and the increasing demands from our community. We've identified four major organizational priorities as service, readiness, safety, and empowerment, and that's empowering our personnel to be part of that solution and move forward, and it's really been a key in helping us to accomplish many of our goals. As I mentioned, with the challenges that we're facing, it's really the time over distance challenges. As, as growth occurs, we get farther away from fire stations. As more people come to town and the call volume increases, there's fewer resources available to do it, and that's some of what we're seeing with some of those response time changes, and I would expect to see those response time changes based on that growth. The challenge that we have, one very big blessing we have as an autonomous special district, is that we're basically, you know, our basic, our primary source of revenue is property tax. Property tax is a very stable revenue source, but the key to note is when the nation went through the recession, the nation was already coming out of the recession before that downturn in the budget hit the Consumers CSD because of the property tax. So, the revenue was already recovering before the downturn hit, and we're still trying to recover, and it takes, as we work through in restoring Proposition 8 and reassessing property valuations, it's sometimes two to three years before those upturns actually end up making it to our budget. So, that's, now we're, now we're chasing ourselves trying to keep up, and that's just one of the keys to, you know, the American economy and the cyclical nature of it. I mentioned that since 2013, the 5% population increase and the 35%, 34% increase in call volume, that we're actively involved in local, state, and federal EMS service delivery and working to advance that and really working to stay on the cutting edge. I'm working as part of a coalition in my role as the legislative director with the California Fire Chiefs Association to put, we're working to get initiative together, and we may be reaching out to the city council, working through Gene, to look for support for what we're calling the D-Risk Coalition and it's disaster for safer, disaster preparedness for safer communities. And what we're trying to do is set ourselves up so that as local government, we have the ability to pre-position resources in advance of known disasters. We knew the winds were going to blow harder than they had in a long time, up in the Napa Valley and Sonoma County, but there's no mechanism in place that allows us to deploy resources to an emergency that hasn't occurred. And so, how do we go about doing that? How do we set it up for success? And we're working right now to put that structure in place. There's a press conference next week, and we're going to be reaching out, potentially asking for letters of support throughout, and hopefully be able to make this part of Governor Brown's budget, to put $100 million in to pre-position local government resources so that we can help one another. We don't know an incident's going to occur, we don't know exactly where an incident's going to occur, but we know that post-fire down in Montecito with the rains that came in January, that we were going to have floods. We didn't know exactly which hill was going to flood or exactly where it would be, but we had the ability to put resources out in front of, be able to get people out of harm's way and put responders in there without waiting for the flood to occur and then make the call, which is unfortunately the system we're in now, so trying to be a little more proactive than reactive. So, we are working through a number of initiatives, from Station 77, which will be our next, it's basically just south of the Consumers River College Annex at Bruceville and Poppy Ridge, so a lot of development around that area. We're currently in the construction for that. We're working to continue to bolster staffing in key support positions, administration, fire prevention, and fleet management. We're at a point now with our ambulances, we're doing complete PMs on our vehicles every, on the ambulances every three weeks, just an indicator of the mileage these units are traveling. And so, with that increased frequency, we need more mechanics to be able to make sure that that work gets done. Doing some succession management and updating our strategic plan, and obviously, we're paying very close attention to the ambulance unit and hour utilization to be able to continue to set ourselves up for success and not put our position, our personnel in a position to, you know, become overly fatigued, overly tired, to where it could impact care, and not to put themselves in harm's way to becoming themselves. With that, I know it was a little bit lengthy, a lot of information. I tried to speed up a little bit the end, but happy to answer any questions.
Fed us with a fire hose.
Yeah, yeah. I'll try to do it in smaller doses next time. There'll be a quiz at the end of the evening, too, so.
Chief, by the way, it's good to see that you recovered from our trip.
Yeah.
I did have a question for you. I know slated quite a while ago, Station 47, do we have a timeline on when that might go in place?
That'd be, Station 47 would be quite some time out. We know that with the Eastview Pacific Plan, that our ability to address that will be doing a remodel of the existing Station 46, potentially increasing staffing there, but based on the travel distances and everything, we're well within that, where we could add additional personnel as needed. And right now, you know, our call volume is in a very, you know, there's a very, there's still capacity in the existing units, which is, but we want to keep that capacity. We don't want to push to capacity.
So, there won't be any issues as far as calls for service on the west side? I'm thinking recently with our last, our last derailment, blocking at least three of the crossings.
We did, working with the Galt Safety Committee, we went through and did some analysis. I don't have the numbers specifically in front of me, but it was a very small, the overall number of calls that we run was a, was a small percentage of the overall call volume within the city of Galt itself. Is it possible to occur? Yes. Is it likely to occur or probable? No. You know, in terms of something like that happening, and it's sort of that, that balance that, you know, standing up a fire station is $3 million a year, salary benefits, station operating costs, you know, the call volume, you know, it's, it's not about money, it's about people, it's about service. We know that the likelihood of the trains being blocked and the number of calls, it's possible, but it's not probable.
Thanks, chief.
No, no comments. Very good. So, my only comment is last year, we did a tour of your training facility. It was amazing. I was really impressed with CSD's training facility. It was, and we visited the fire stations, and I think it'd be great if we set up that, do that again this year. Tom might, if he hasn't seen their training facility, he might really enjoy it, just to see where our, where our tax dollars are going in the training program, so I commend you on being, on having a really state-of-the-art training center, so.
But from tremendous support from, you know, Director Lozano, among others, to help get us there. And what I'd encourage, in terms of scheduling something, if we want to do it before August, you know, we'll have our academy out there, and so, you know, we could coordinate it on a date to where there's actually, you know, really a lot going on.
Well, that'd be cool.
You know, they're doing stuff all the time, so it'd be a great opportunity to get out and have eyes on, and I know I gave all of you guys ride-along packets, too, and haven't seen you yet, so. I'll throw down the challenge.
So, yeah, I would like to thank Rich Lozano, who is in the audience, president of CSD, so thank you for joining us. Okay?
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address city council on any agenda item during, during consideration of the item. Speakers should restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the speaker sheet, the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Okay, so my understanding is, is that all of the speakers wanted to speak under public comment, not at the time of the item, except for the last one. Okay. David Tellis?
My name is David Tels. I'm the secretary of the Real Men's Club. I want to comment on the Parks and Recreation Director's recommendation to cancel the one-time fee waiver for nonprofits to use a city facility. The Real Men's Club was formed in 2012 as a domestic nonprofit corporation for the purpose of giving to the community. Every year, we put on an average of seven or eight lunches at various locations in the Galt community and an annual crab feed at Littleton Community Center. All of the proceeds from these events are donated to organizations and needy individuals in the community. As an example of what we contribute, in 2017, we made the following donations. $3,500 to Gallup. $1,250 to the Boy Scouts. $1,000 to cancer volunteers. $1,000 to Lakayam. $850 to the Galt Historical Society. $460 to the Liberty Ranch tennis team. $500 to the Grange Hall. $500 to the American Legion Color Guard. $500 to Sunshine Closet. And over $3,950 to needy individuals. The total that the Real Men's Club donated to the community last year was over $14,000. We also assist other organizations with their events, primarily by providing the food and doing the cooking. The club puts in approximately 1,800 voluntary man-hours in a year to provide these events for community participation and to be able to make this contribution. If the city cancels the fee waiver, allowing nonprofits the one-time-a-year use of a city facility without charge, and we have to pay $600 to rent Littleton Community Center, you will be taking $600 away from the community. The Real Men's Club strongly recommends that the council not cancel, cancel the fee waiver. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tels. Thank you for everything you do for the community. Rich Lozano?
First of all, congratulations to Chief Stockman. I know that's quite an honor. In my 24, 25 years of law enforcement, I only got the executive, or the intermediate certificate, so quite an accomplishment. And thanks to the chief for being here tonight and doing the presentation. Mayor Huer, councilmember staff, and community of Galt, my name's Rich Lozano. I serve as the president of the Consumers CSD Board of Directors, your fire and emergency medical service agency. I'm here to speak with you tonight on behalf of the board of the directors and the entire CSD staff. I would like to invite the entire Galt community, city and county residents alike, to the May 16th Consumers CSD Board meeting that will be held here in Galt City Hall at 6:30. It is a priority of the CSD Board and staff to provide greater access to the community of Galt, to our meetings. As you may remember, we conducted a meeting here last fall. On behalf of the CSD Board, General Manager Maureen Zamoripa, Fire Chief On behalf of the CSD Board, General Manager Maureen Zamoripa, Fire Chief Mike McLaughlin, I would like to thank the city staff and council for allowing us the opportunity to use your facility to bring our board meetings to our community. Have a great evening, and I hope to see everybody here on the 16th.
Thank you. Don Farmer?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. I just wanted to touch quickly on a couple of things that were on the agenda tonight. Item J3, I believe, is the first one, the competitive bid waiver. So, I didn't do a lot of research on this. I just kind of looked it over and kind of put just some common sense to it. And again, I just have a couple of questions, more or less. So apparently, so we have a list that's been revised six times in the past, where you add companies and vendors that the city does business with on a regular basis, that we feel, or the city feels, should I say, that for a various amount of reasons, that we continue doing business with them, where we don't have to put that process out to bid. And I can understand, there's lots of services probably that fall under that. But I also, it's a little concerning, like as a citizen, just to think that, you know, as the list grows, we have 47 vendors on there now, and there's going to be 11 added if you guys pass this, you know, that's, that's 57 people, or 57 vendors on there that we will not put out to bid. So my questions are, is there time restrictions or term restrictions on this? If there's a certain company that the city is doing business with, and we are going to continue that relationship because we feel like they deliver the best product, or they feel like they have a certain product that is like the only in the industry? I mean, there's a various amount of reasons that are listed here. But my question is, is there a term, is there a point of time where the city says, okay, we've been doing business with this particular vendor for 10 years, do we now then say, do we need to reevaluate and just kind of look around and say, is this still the one we want to continue with? Because I think the more we add onto this list, and as the list grows, I mean, the list could be 100 vendors next year. I mean, it's growing rapidly. So at what point, we kind of take out, take away the input of, you know, free enterprise competitiveness for bidding for certain services? Now, I mean, like, you know, paper clips, things like that, but there's some like, you know, there's some part, there's some playground equipment companies on here, and I heard Mr. Salisa's presentation on, you know, certain companies only carry certain things, so I get all that. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of different variety of companies on this list. And so it would just, it just is a little uncomforting to me when I see that list grow and grow. Are we at any point going to look and say, you know, is this someone we're going to reevaluate? Because again, you know, it pretty much leaves this as a discretion of department head to say, yeah, you know, we like this company, they've been good to us, let's just keep doing business with them. I mean, if I like my lawn guy, am I going to keep using him? Probably. But I'm a private citizen, and this is a city, and I think there's a check and balance with public funds. So again, I don't know everything about this topic. I'm just simply presenting some concerns, and I think they're valid to bring up. The second thing I want to bring up is number L3, which is the city clerk position. You guys are presenting to bring this back to the ballot, to have the position consolidated into one position. I know currently Ms. Settles does both jobs, and I believe that was the same case with Ms. Agar before, that it was just one person. So I can understand kind of the concept of why should we have two positions if one person's been doing that the whole time? However, I would like to know, there was a mention of some money savings. I'm assuming that the money savings has to do with bringing it on the ballot each time. So I would just like to get clarification if that's the savings that have been mentioned. And also, I am a little concerned, but this went to ballot in 2014 to the public, and the public voted against it, so now we're bringing it back. So my concern is, and this was presented by Ms. Hood, who is the person who apparently brought this forward, I don't know if she's unaware, or, or I'm sure she probably is, that if we're just, if we present something to the public and they vote it down, then are we just going to, you know, keep trying over and over until it passes? I mean, it just seems like we went to the public, we got input from them, their input was no. So that's concern. I do like the concept of the way it's written, where it says that if it was consolidated, and it would be an appointed position by the City Council. I like the fact that City Council will then have input, and it's, and for me, that's the voice of the people. So if council gets to go over criteria of applicants and say, this is the person that we select, then I like that concept. I think it's a good concept. I feel like it still interjects, you know, public input, even though it's not a voted position. So anyways, those are my concerns with these two topics. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kathy Loesch?
My name is Kathy Loesch. I'm a 31-year resident of Galt. I'm a 25-year teacher in Galt, and I'm here tonight representing the Kiwanis Club of Galt. Our club has been supporting families and contributing to the Galt community and surrounding areas for nearly 26 years. During the course of our existence, we have provided service to thousands of children and their families, and donated nearly $150,000 through various service projects, activities, and causes. Our volunteer hours number well over 4,000. We have sponsored Days at the Pool, dog shows at the Kiwanis Park Parks, fall festivals at McFarland Ranch, back-to-school shopping sprees for local children, and Christmas gifts for area families. We also purchased the windmill at McFarland Ranch, art supplies for the Winter Bird Festival, and the marquee, children's furniture, and seed cabinet at the Marion Lawrence Library. In addition, we have given scholarships to Key Club students at Galt High School, Liberty Ranch High School, and Valley High School. We have donated to Galt Elementary Schools and to the school district's service learning programs. Our club also supports the Kiwanis Family House, located on the grounds of the UC Davis Med Center in Sacramento. Several Galt and Acampo families have stayed for no fee at the Kiwanis Family House when their children were in the hospital. Our annual budget is $6,000, all of which goes back to our community in some way. Although we haven't used city facilities for our events in several years, a $600 rental fee, 10% of our annual budget, would mean the following. Fewer children with new school clothes and school supplies. Fewer families with Christmas gifts. Fewer scholarships to graduating seniors, and/or fewer donations to school programs. It would mean that our club would be unable to fund dental work for a child, or purchase coats or pay a smudgel for a local family, or help with myriad other needs and requests that find their way to our club. In closing, I'd like to share with you excerpts from some of the thank yous we have received over the years. "I am so grateful to you for taking my child shopping for school clothes. The Kiwanis chaperone made my child feel special. Without the kindness of Kiwanis, my family wouldn't have had a Christmas this year." "Thank you, Kiwanis, for donating to the service learning program so that our students continue to have opportunities to engage in service learning projects at the Kasumnas River Preserve and McFarland Ranch." "Thank you for the scholarship money. Your generosity will help me purchase books for my first quarter at UC Davis." "Thank you for your time and for listening to the groups here that are giving back to your and our community. We hope you reconsider the fee proposal and allow nonprofits to continue receiving one fee waiver use of city facilities per year." Thank you.
Thank you. Carl Bonner? Bonner?
Lived in Galt since 1948, and I just wanted to speak about the Littleton Center, Parks and Rec in general. And I'm here tonight representing really the Galt High School alumni. But before I bring up our, you know, the information you want to hear about that, I wanted to represent two groups that are no longer in existence in Galt. Number one is the Galt J.C.s, formerly the Junior Chamber of Commerce. And after being married for about a year, I was, bought a house and living on Oak Avenue, and one morning I heard what sounded like a, you know, a junk man going through the neighborhood, and all of a sudden, somebody knocked on my door, opened the door, and it's the Galt J.C.s. And they said, "You get out here. You're married, you've had a year to yourself and your wife, and we need you out here." And what they were doing is they were doing the citywide cleanup. And I mean, they had trucks, pickups, trailers, I don't know, we may have even had a wagon. And so anyway, they gave me, while they circled the block, they gave me a little bit of time to get dressed, or they're going to pull me out in my night clothes. And anyway, so that was my beginning with the J.C.s. And after we picked up the stuff, we'd take it down to Fourth and C Street and dump it there, and the guys there would throw it in bins. As I remember, it was probably six, eight bins, and it progressed up to 10 or 12. And without the city's approval, of course, you wouldn't let that kind of an operation go on in the street. The one thing that we needed all through the J.C.s was the city's cooperation, and we got it very dearly. And a thing that I really kind of had to smile deep down was, we built the cleanup up to 50 bins, but at somewhere about 12, the El Grove Scavenger Company bailed out on us. They were providing, they were providing those free bins, but their participation ended there. So the J.C.s, being very well financed and working hard to make some money, we started paying for the bins. And the last year that I worked and saw the figures on it, we had paid $40 for 50 bins. Then, then there was a little bit of a break, and I got to where I was cleaning up again, and the city had taken it over. And I came up and I saw all the city people, all the staff and everybody working hard, and I thought, boy, this is really great. I just bring my four or five loads up here and I dump it. But the J.C.s in their operation, we always needed the city, and we had a very good relationship with the city. At the time, I started, they were well into producing the Harvey Park, and it wasn't an elaborate park that it is today, or any of the other parks, for instance. But anyway, we needed the city for that, and we got a lot of cooperation. Towards the end of the '60s, the Chamber of Commerce decided to drop the Galt Festival. And they put a third-party teenager in charge of it that year. And a couple of years, a couple of months after the event, the word came to us, and there was merchants in the community that were sitting on about $1,300, $1,400 worth of debt, unpaid debt. And to our knowledge, there was no, no more money left, although we did later find some money. But it was just menial change. So anyway, we took it over and let their organization be intact. Said, we don't need to bring them into ours, we need two organizations in town. But anyway, the thing is, with about two years of good times, the Galt Festival was growing very well, and we had a lot of good volunteers, some of the best I've worked with, although I've got some more top ones that I'm working with now. And in some of those volunteers, they were country guys, and they, they were participating in rodeos. And they came, and they wanted to put a rodeo arena in. Well, where do you put a rodeo arena in when you're over to the Fairsite area? And there's really nothing there but fields and a track with some fencing and everything. But we worked with the city, and the city let us draw, make a schematic, and we came to them and we pleaded a case, and what they did was they let us build the rodeo arena. And then, to make it work, we had to get bleachers. We went to Conquer, and we got some cast-off bleachers from the Conquer across the county.
Mr. Bonner, you'll need to wrap it up. You have five seconds.
Without all these things happening with the city and that organization, and at this time, the Galt High Alumni, we couldn't have made it work. Right now, the alumni, we, in 12 years, we've gone from $1,200 to $8,600 this year in scholarships. Without being able to kind of provide a show-and-tale thing at the Littleton Center, we wouldn't be able to get these people committed to donate the money. And it's come in very handily the last three or four years. It's really snowballing. It's going well. And...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bonner.
Anyway, we can't, it takes a $600 scholarship out of one of those students' pocket and their education if you charge that money. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Cox?
Hello, I'm new to the city, and I know none of you. Which one of you is the mayor? I understand there's an election coming up, you're up for reelection, a couple of other people. And I thought there'd be three topics that these citizens would want to know about. The first one is a really hot-button topic, sanctuary state. And I was wondering if each of you could tell me how you stand on that.
Sir, this is public comment. We don't, we don't engage in conversation. No. If you'd want to contact us privately, we'd be happy to do that. But at this point, that's not on the agenda, so we really can't do that. So if you just want to make your comments.
All right, then. Since there's no response, I guess my other concern is homeless. I understand there's like a 14% increase in homelessness people in the state, and probably Galt has something similar. So that's another concern. The city employee pension situation. Lodi and Galt are having a hell of a time with it. So I don't know how Galt's doing. Like I said, I'm new here, so. Also, last, I noticed at Christmas time, there's not a lot of decorations downtown. And I was wondering if there was some way to have a fundraiser to raise some money for that. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome to our community. Julie Clark?
Madam Mayor, members of council, good evening. And I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the members of the audience, who, without compensation or reward, have taken it upon themselves to be active participants in their government. We thank you for your service. We must not forget that this country is a government of the people. We are the people. Those of us who stand here before... Those of us who stand here before you today don't come shuffling across the floor on our knees, begging favors from our lords, because those who came before us refused to bow to the power of tyranny. At the last council meeting, we heard final comments from a member of council. She appeared to direct her comments to certain members of the public, who, with good intentions, bravely stood before the council and expressed concerns in areas of transparency, performance, and future planning. To witness an elected official attempt, through the use of subtle shaming, to deter a citizen from exercising the right to speak freely is alarming. We, the members of the community, will not be silenced. We do not have to know the answers to the questions that we ask, and as a leader of the people, a leader of the people should be open to criticism and questions from the public. Now, yes, the job of council member is, on the surface, a thankless one. I would wager none of you entered public service with expectations of fanfare and accolades or material enrichment. I am, however, certain that each one of you has a strong and binding connection to the city. I have seen you out in the community with your children and your grandchildren, and I believe you genuinely care about the quality of life in Galt. I would like to warn you all today about what I see as the single most dangerous afflictions for local government. It can begin innocently enough, never alerting us to its malignant presence. Eventually, it spreads, causing irreparable damage throughout the entire system. This cancer I speak of is complacency. Complacency causes us to stop asking questions, to stop thinking critically and assuming everything is fine. Please start asking questions, more questions. Encourage public commentary and input. We welcome any opportunity to learn more about how things are run, whether through public workshops or meetings, but know this, our voices will not be silenced. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees? Want to start?
Getting there. They decided not to come up on me.
We'll start with Vice Mayor Cruz.
There we go. As many have, might have noted, I was absent from the last council, uh, council meeting. I was back east in Washington, DC, representing both the city and the Sacramento County Metropolitan Air District, which I represent the city of Galt and Ileton for. This year, the goals were, were pretty much the same. This year, the goals were pretty much the same as they were before as far as air quality is concerned. The problem that we ran into, there's a lot of apprehension back east. People don't know if they're gonna have a job tomorrow or not. With that said, we did a lot of good things as far as continuing programs that keep the air clean and intentionally keeping the air clean. By the way, Galt is very lucky. We're in a little breezeway that blows a lot of that stuff up into the mountains. I know the people in the mountains have to deal with it, but at least we're good. I made several contacts at the local level regarding our Walnut Over Crossing expansion and the expansion of the industrial park, still keeping in contact with those individuals and hoping somewhere soon we'll get some type of funding out of them. That's it for cap to cap. Can I only continue on the other one?
Go ahead.
Sure.
Regional Futures Forum, that was attended by myself, Councilmember Molsen, and Councilmember Cruz, Vice Mayor Cruz.
And also we had two staff.
Two staff, too.
Two staff. It was rather interesting trying, having staff trying to get us there and three councilors trying to figure out how.
We voted on which way to go.
We still got lost. On a serious note, we spoke on regional economic issues and when I say regional, we are part of the Sacramento region, even though we're the island in Sacramento County. It was really informative and, to me, it energized a lot of the electeds present, which there were over forty of us there, as well as members of the private sector. And there were also nonprofits there as well. The biggest areas of importance that I took away from it were housing needs and reinventing the region so that we bring more monies here. Transportation, affordability, and connectivity. A lot of people in this community know we have commuter buses and that's our only connection as far as public transportation between ourselves, San Malkeen and Sacramento County areas. And it was really impressive to see people standing up and taking note.
I also enjoyed it. Add a couple of comments. Secog is, what, six counties, right?
Six counties, right.
Six counties. And we had elected officials there from all six of them. And it was the first time, I believe, in
Ten years.
Almost, yeah, ten years, that Secog has sponsored an event to try to get us all in one room. And that helps us connect with other entities and discuss our similar issues and problems. And if anybody has a silver bullet, of course, we're not against grabbing it and running with it also. The other item I would like to mention is I had the extremely good fortune of spending half a day with our city engineer and his folks, Steve Winkler, touring our wastewater treatment plant and our new deep-water well site. That sounds exciting, but my background's maintenance and engineering, so yes, it was exciting for me. We could've spent a lot more time there, except we just kinda got tired and it was Friday afternoon, so, late. That's it.
I was trying to, okay. Councilmember Campion?
Nothing.
Okay, so, since the last meeting, I attended the police presentation on MAD and that's what I was trying to pull up because I received an email from the presenter and that, and she's challenging Galt to form a team for the Walk for MAD and Walk Like MAD 2018 to raise money for Mothers Against Drunk Drivers, Against Drunk Driving. They changed their name. Anyway, it was a great presentation, outreach to the community. I really wish there'd been more young people there. I think there's a real message to be heard about how devastating a drunk-driving injury or a drunk-driving conviction can be to a family and to an individual. So it was a great presentation and thanks for the police department putting that together. And TJ?
I attended the chamber luncheon on April nineteenth. It was, there was three nonprofits, spoke about things they're doing in the community. I attended the youth art show, the Youth Commission Art Show. They did a wonderful job. I thought it was, it was based on earth and recycling and, so it was, they did a wonderful job. It was a great event.
They did, I dropped by, too.
And I think that, oh, I did attend the Commission on Aging. They invited me to attend their meeting on April twenty-sixth. And I did attend their meeting and we talked about Senior Center. And we had actually a representative from Elk Grove, the woman who runs the Senior Center in Elk Grove, talk about the Senior Center in Elk Grove. It's been in, you know, it started twenty years ago and how it's progressed. They've had some very lucrative things happen financially for them. But she did talk about the financial, they're actually a nonprofit and actually raise their money, they do get grants from CSD and from the city of Elk Grove, but they do not, they're not funded by those, by CSD or the city of Elk Grove. So it was really interesting. One of the things that came to light to me during that conversation, that I'm gonna talk some more with the Commission on Aging is, is that it appears to be the thing that we don't have in our community. I mean, we do have a place for meals, we do have a place for activities, we don't really have a resource center, so, for seniors. And so we're gonna have some, they're gonna have some further conversation on that. I attended Library Authority where they recognized Friends of the Library. April was Friends of the Library Month. And honored two amazing high school students from two libraries, recognized them as volunteers in the community and the great things that they're doing for libraries. So I would encourage any youth, if you're looking for a opportunity to volunteer, library's a great place to do it. I attended Greater Sacramento with the city manager and I, attended Greater Sacramento Champions Program for elected officials. And I would encourage the rest of the council, they're going to offer it again on July, mid-July. So I would really encourage every, Jean and I now are certified economic champions for Greater Sacramento. And Greater Sacramento is doing, you know, two years ago when they came to us, asking us to join, it was kind of a leap of faith for the city to move forward with joining Greater Sacramento. It was a new organization, they had some different goals in mind. And I can tell you that the director, the CEO, Barry Broom?
Bloom.
Broom? Is doing, him and his team are doing amazing things about changing the conversation and looking at economic development for the entire region and where we need to go. And they're also taking on the state of California and they're putting a ballot measure on the ballot in November to start looking at a strategic plan for the state of California. Because every, the ten top economic states in the United States, all of them have a strategic plan regarding economic development, except for the state of California. So they're moving forward on passing that legislation, so. Otherwise, the Regional Futures Forum. Anything else? Okay. Did you have anything, Jean?
Just, you know, kinda echo some of the comments on the Greater Sacramento. You know, I was kinda skeptical when they did come to our community and I do sit on the board. The board consists of sixty executives from the region, actually forty executives from the region, and nineteen cities and counties are represented on that board. And what they pulled together economically, you know, they're really moving, you know, I think the gauge, you know, on where we're going as a region in a very positive direction and partnering with Secog and some other organizations, bringing in the Brookings Institute to do those analytics. We do depend on them quite a bit on our economic analytics and Amy will talk about that at an upcoming council meeting. But it is, you know, something I've kinda turned around and very pleased that we are part of that organization and they came to our region to help us out.
And really, their economic, one of their top economic guys was very complimentary of Amy, so I think we should all be very proud of Amy Mendez. They spoke highly of her and how much she's interacted with them. I think it's great. Okay, information consent calendar, item J three was pulled, so let's take that item, update competitive bidding waiver list.
I was actually just looking for more explanations so the public could know a little more about what we were doing with it, if we could.
Turn to Mr. Winkler.
Absolutely. Mayor and council members and the public, this item is to request an update to an existing list of items that the council has previously given us permission to dispense with competitive bidding, where certain criteria are met, state law allows this, and the city has a procurement policy. The list was first developed in 2017 and has since been updated three previous times and this would make the fourth update in eleven years. The types of items that are on the list would be things that are sole source, only one manufacturer or producer of the product. Another example of things that could meet this criteria are things where we have invested in a certain standard of equipment. For instance, the city specifies Neptune water meters are under improvement standards. Well then, we need to get Neptune meter parts when we're servicing those. So it'd be an example of to be consistent citywide, so when our workers go out, they've got the right parts, the right training, the right factory certification, and we're practicing what we preach with the development community when they're asked to put those in, that we're following that same lead as to what we required. Another example would be things like that was mentioned previously. Once you put in a park system at a park, very often, those are prior to, and you get replacement parts when they wear out or break for safety reasons, it's a little bit like you just can't go out and get a Chevy transmission and put it on your Ford vehicle, it's not gonna fit. We do try to pick vendors that have a proven track record of providing them, but often developers are putting in the parks and then we need to, for the life of that park equipment, find replacement parts. And so those would typically be a sole-source exception to allow us to match the planks and match the bolt systems and match the slide systems and find replacement parts. Another example of the types of services are where police cars, where we don't specify a specific brand, that is not on the list, but once we purchase a police car, we need to outfit that with light bars, with flashing lights, with radio equipment, with computers, and all the communication systems. We need those all to be outfitted similarly so you can, any officer can get in any car and the switches are the same and the functionality's the same. And then when we haven't worked on, we don't have a whole different wiring system in every individual police car, it's just not efficient. And so typically, the finding is that it's in the public interest, the taxpayers' interest, while sometimes sole-source items can cost a little more, very often they're actually discounted for government procurement, things like our Motorola radio system. We don't want Johnson radios and Motorola radios and, you know, five other makes out there. We want officers to have consistent equipment. And that helps with training, that helps with parts, that helps with vendor competitiveness. Typically, those systems are put out to bid and competitively bid, but once you have purchased those systems, you wanna stick with that. Another category would be legacy software, where we use ARC GIS, which is the industry standard for all of our drafting products and everything, and all of the states require it, all of our improvement plans require to be submitted in that format. So when we need an ARC GIS update next version, we don't wanna have to go out and competitively bid a different software system where we lose all of our archive legacy opportunities. So those are just a few examples. There are thirty-eight items that were on the previous list and we are deleting one because they no longer carry the product and so we've had to find an alternate vendor for park equipment. And we're requesting approval of eleven new vendors. Almost all of those are in either water or wastewater, where we've spent millions of dollars in upgrades and they've put in proprietary equipment to get the warranties honored and to get factory service availability for these multimillion-dollar systems. We need to have in-kind, factory-authorized replacement parts to keep our warranties intact. So by and large, those are the typical types of things. The city has thousands of vendors and we've, this list is thirty-eight vendors. So nine, five times out of a hundred, we're using competitive bid processes where aftermarket things are available, but there are a few select things where we've got significant investments. And frankly, we don't wanna factory-certify our utility people on eight different types of pumps and eight different control systems. It just would not make sense economically for the city to do that. So we really think we're saving the public taxpayer a lot of money in streamlining that procurement process. So rather than bring back each of these procurements individually for council approval for a waiver, we've identified the recommended items that we're gonna need day in and day out.
Thank you.
Questions?
Well, comments? I'm, being in maintenance and maintenance engineering background forever, I have been working for a defense contractor, low bid, by the way. If you don't strategically look at this stuff, what you end up with is your spare parts and your stores are more costly than the equipment by the time you get done with it. So you have to strategically look at where you wanna standardize. Because an example, if you have two well pumps and you have a motor go out in one and a pump go out in the other and they're put in by low bid and they're both different, you've got two wells down, not one, because you're stuck. Or you could carry a spare pump for each and a spare motor for each. You know, so this makes sense, okay? So for transparency, that's why the staff has brought it forward, so everybody knows what's going on. And the rest of it's low bid or bid process.
Kurt?
No comment. I agree with what
Move the item, please.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Oh, go ahead, roll call vote. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Huwer? Aye. Motion passes, four-o vote. Okay, information consent calendar, minutes of the regular meeting of April seventeenth, 2018, receive and file warrants for the period ending April eighteenth, 2018, 2018 general municipal election, and Dry Creek Oaks tentative subdivision map amendment and rezone project. Do I have a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Molsen, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Huwer? Aye. Motion passes, four-o vote. Scheduled matters. We have Veranda at River Oaks general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, rezone, vesting tentative subdivision map, and design review project. And Mr. Arias?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Chris Arias, Community Development Director. The item you have before you, as mentioned, is the Veranda at River Oaks project. The project is located in the northeast corner of Walnut Avenue and Carillium Boulevard, directly north of Community Park. The site is zoned office professional, or OP, with a requested rezone. Elliott Homes is proposing a sixty-unit subdivision on a five-and-a-half acre lot for a density of ten-point-seven units per acre. The proposed development includes homes that are alley-loaded with buildings front-end Carillium and Walnut, as well as interior Paseos. The project will include a single public roadway connecting Carillium Boulevard on the west to Walnut Avenue on the south. It's a small project, but has a lot going on, and I think you mentioned some of it. There's a general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, rezone, vesting tentative subdivision map, design review, and SECO approval. So bear with me as we go through. The project requires an amendment to the 2030 general plan land use map, changing the OP to medium-high-density residential. The MDHR land use calls for a density of eight to fourteen units per acre, so the ten-point-seven units per acre of this project fits neatly into the MDHR land use. The project is internally consistent with the policies and goals of the general plan. The staff report identifies consistency findings. I have shown some on the screen and one I have shown some on the screen, and one, Housing Element Policy HE 1.8 calls for an innovative planning approach to, for new housing. And this, in this instance, this project diversifies Galt's housing stock by providing a for-sale home on a smaller lot, making the home more affordable to Galt residents. The design of the subdivision is also somewhat unique to Galt. The alley-loaded design puts the garage in the rear of the home and provides for a more neighborhood-friendly and aesthetically pleasing front elevation. The design of the site is also a walkable community. The interior paseos provide great pedestrian connections throughout the site. And then, as mentioned, it's across the street from Community Park, and then, there are also vacant commercial lands to the west of the site. So, and there's actually additional commercial lands on Twin Cities, so the project is very walkable. And the site is essentially infill development. I mentioned there is vacant parcels to the west, but the northeast area is primarily built out. So, we really consider the site almost. The next entitlement is an amendment to the Northeast Area Specific Plan, changing the land use designation from OP to multiple-family residential R3 SP. And the analysis shows that the proposed project is consistent with the plan. The plan calls for higher-density sites to be located on major city streets. And obviously, this project is located on two city major arterials in Walnut and Carillion. In fact, when this Northeast Area Specific Plan was adopted in 1987, it had a high-density site right to the north and east of this project site. That site was rezoned, or the land use was changed in 19, in the early 90s to low-density, but it underscores how we tried to get high-density near the major city streets. And then, there's also another high-density site right across the corner. The Northeast Area Specific Plan also calls for a housing balance in the plan area, which should provide for a wider ranging, a wider range of housing types. And currently, the Northeast area is built out with primarily low-density residential housing. In fact, I think it's over 70% of that housing type, which is identified by homes on lots of 6,500 feet or greater, and then, homes sized 1,500 square feet or greater. So, this project can help provide more of a balance of the housing stock to the area. And it should be noted that since the, like I stated earlier, that the Northeast Area Specific Plan is just about built out. When staff engages in a general plan and zoning cleanup, either at the end of this year or next year, we will plan and request to phase out the specific plan. The project rezone will change the OP to R3 at Veranda River Oaks Plan Development. The plan development is requested because the lot sizes and widths do not conform to the R3 zoning standards. In the R3 zone, the minimum width at the street front is 65 feet, and the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet. This project is proposing 41-foot lot widths at the street front and then, a minimum lot size of 2,706, but there are some that are greater than that. Building setbacks will also be slightly less than code requirements. The findings for the rezone are detailed in the staff report. The findings require that the plan development has special features that warrant the plan development status. And in this case, the designation of a medium-high-density project not only helps us diversify our housing stock, as I mentioned earlier, this could help us meet state requirements. If you look on the screen, I included a chart from our latest general plan and housing element progress report. And our production has been primarily in, again, low-density housing. You can see from 2014 that that's where all the production has been. And the Veranda is not an affordable housing project by deed restriction, but by providing a home on a smaller lot, it can be more affordable to Galt residents and help meet some of those other income categories. The next component to the project is the vesting tentative subdivision map. The findings for it are shown in the staff report. The project is required to dedicate almost an acre of parkland, and since there is no land in that small subdivision to dedicate, they were conditioned to pay an in-lu fee or a quimby fee. And the traffic study associated with the project found that the subdivision, the inclusion of the subdivision would not have a significant impact on the city roadways. In fact, there was only one mitigation measure to come forward with that report, and that was the installation of always-stop signs at the corner of Walnut and Elk Hills. The site is providing a total of 198 parking spaces, which exceeds the parking requirement. Each home is provided with a two-car garage with overflow parking located on that single public roadway, and it includes parking on the street. There's some, some parking on the street here, but then, it includes parking stalls off the main street. And actually, parking has been a big debate and issue with this project moving forward. We started with less parking and kind of grew to the parking that we have there. And as you can see on the screen, there's, the calculation is essentially 3.3 spaces per unit. The subdivision has a number of conditions. Most are standard and apply to all maps, but then, some are unique. And, you know, I'd like to add before I get to one of the first conditions, because I did add some that are unique to this project on the screen, that we were able, as a group, the planning commission and city council and staff, able to visit similar projects in Folsom and Rancho Cordova. And I thought it was a really good exercise, and I thank the applicant for actually allowing us to do that. And one of the conditions that we have was a result of that visit, and that is placing the AC units in the side yards. Because when we walked through there, you could see that the AC units could be somewhat of an eyesore and somewhat of an issue. There were a couple other items that come out of that, and I think parking was another one. This project was recommended for approval by the planning commission at their meeting last month, but they did ask for an additional condition, and that is that the applicant put in decorative fencing on the homes fronting Walnut and Carillion. As originally planned, it was open, similar to the Rancho Cordova project that we visited. But the planning commissioners thought that that could be a safety issue and asked for fencing to be placed there, and the applicant agreed. One of the other conditions relates to the distribution of project architecture. It states that no two identical elevations should be adjacent to each other or cross from one another, which is pretty standard. And then, also, a good segue into the next item, which is the project architecture. The proposed project includes four floor plans, each with three elevation options, a rural Italian cottage in Spanish. The 15 total elevations meet the requirement for a subdivision of the size. And the architectural style is a typical California Mediterranean, which features stucco exterior, low-pitched tile roofs, and in some cases, archways at windows and doors. The homes will range in size from 1,452 square feet to 1,930 square feet, and all will be two-story. And as I mentioned before, I think the unique feature here is that the homes will face the street, and the garages will be in the rear. And again, this provides a more aesthetic view at the street front. The color and material board shows a wide variety of neutral colors from which to choose. All homes will be stucco with a variety of brick and stone veneers, and all tile will be concrete tile. A SEQA document was prepared and completed for the project. It was circulated for public review. We only received two comments. We responded to one comment, but no comments raised any significant issue which invalidated the document or the project. And we included those comments in our response as attachment one to the staff report. And then, we also completed a mitigating, a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and that is attachment to the report. And finally, that concludes staff presentation. The city council is asked tonight to open the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the SEQA document, adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment, specific plan amendment, vesting tentative subdivision map, and the Veranda at River Oaks architecture. As well as introducing the ordinance approving the rezone and waiving the full reading and continue the next regular meeting for adoption. And then, I would like to add that the ordinance does contain the provision, giving minor change authority to planning commission for minor changes to the plan development. And once again, that concludes staff presentation. Price Walker, representing Elliott Homes, and I will be available to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Then we'll open the public hearing. Any public comment? Kami Martin?
Hi, Kami Martin. I just have a quick question. I read in a, one of the Galt Herald articles about a week and a half ago, that the price point was going to be high 200s to about 400. I was just curious if that was going to be the price point, how we were going to keep people from turning these into rentals.
Maybe the applicant can respond better to the price points, but based on the volatility of the housing market, anything today can really change. But I'm not, we don't price those out at this point. We, when the, the homes are ready to build, then we look at valuation as part of the building permit, and then, looking at, like, a family of four and the state-provided median income. Then, that's when we do our, you know, is it affordable to, you know, that group? But we don't really look at the pricing at this point, not until they submit for building permit.
Hi, Price Walker with Elliott Homes. Thank you for having me here. Just, I wasn't going to do a presentation, because Chris did a really good job. I did, I did want a couple things to mention, and then I'll answer that question. I just want to really, first of all, just thank all of you who came up to our two projects in Folsom and Rancho Cordova. That, I think, was really enlightening for, for all of you and helped, helped understand the project. And frankly, it was very unique to get a, a planning commission and staff, any city council group, to come, to come visit a project. And I, and other projects that are very similar, I think it was, I just want to applaud you, because I've not, in my 30 years of doing this for Elliott, had anyone from any other jurisdiction come, individuals, yes, but not as a group. And I think it was really, I think it was really good for all of us to see it and talk. You got to answer, ask me questions, literally, with the project, almost exactly how you're going to have it built here, right in front of you, and it was really good. And as Chris said, a couple items that really came out of that, primarily, the item that came out was we have moved the AC units out of the front, because there, it was an absolute issue for a few of you, for sure, and probably all of you. But we have managed to, took a little arm-twisting of me on our, our construction guys, because they felt it was easier where they had it. But we've been able to move it to the, to the side yard, where you won't be able to see them. So, I think that's, that was a really good result of that. In terms of, in terms, I don't know the article, I didn't read it, I don't know who, who, who the quote was from. We intend these to be higher than that. We think these are going to be in the threes, to start in the 300s and go to the 400s. So, we don't, we never expect them to be rentals, and we don't, you know, we, we have a longstanding policy of Elliott Homes not to, to sell to investors. But ultimately, as Chris says, you never can ultimately control that over time. But we think the sales, the sales price will, will be at a, at a place where it keeps values up. And we certainly haven't seen that in the other three projects that we, that we're doing so far. So, I am in agreement with all the conditions of approval, including the changes from the planning commission and.
Beat me to it, but okay.
I will, I'd like your support tonight, and I'll answer any questions.
Yeah, you, you knew I was going to ask that question. I always.
Come on, you've been around longer than I have. Or as long as I have.
I always ask the applicant if he agrees with the conditions of approval. City attorneys seem to like that. But, yeah, we did see, we did tour both, both subdivisions. And those are, as of right now, the one that sold out almost immediately in Folsom, none of those are rentals.
None of those are rentals, no.
I think it's a great project. Like you said, staff and council, commission was able to go up to Rancho Cordova and Folsom and take a look at what these units are going to look like. They are a different product that's available, that is not available currently in the community, and I think it will provide an opportunity and a niche for that type of buyer. The, you know, on a, on a, on an, and Chris mentioned the issue about infill. This piece of property's been vacant for 30 years.
Yes, it has.
Had the same zoning as office professional. Obviously, there's no market.
And the same owner.
And the same owner, and the same owner, for 30 years. So, I think it's a good reuse of the, of the land, and I think it will fit into the community very nicely.
Okay, do we have any more public comment?
Well, he's already walked away. It's okay. Real quick question, Price, just, I wanted to address the, the potential issue of the, of the rentals. I was under the impression that there would be an HOA involved with this.
There, there is an HOA involved, absolutely.
Okay.
And, and again, that, it doesn't prohibit it from happening, but it tends to, I think, again, limit it, limit it, because these people move in there knowing the rules, knowing that, you know, there's, there's, there's assessments that are monthly assessments. It, I think it tends to help, keep it, keep it single, you know.
Well, could, Price, could you give a, could you give the audience, like, a one-minute rundown on, on how this particular HO?
Yeah, tip, I mean, what happens is, it's, we have three of these that we're, that we're doing right now. There's one in Roseville, one in Folsom, and one in Rancho Cordova. All of them have HOAs, homeowners associations. And they, they take care of the alleys, because the alleys are private. Any streets that are private, all the lighting, all the landscaping, basically, everything within, inside of the project is, is taken care of through the HOA assessments. Those are, those are assessed on a monthly basis. They come, there's a management company that we use on, actually, we're using the same one for this one as the other three. They're, they, they bill them. If they fail to pay, they, they get leaned, just like, there's, and actually, the CCNRs are written as such that, and the conditions are such that we have to submit those for the SFOD's review. We have used Kurt Sproul, who has written these for us on about 10 different projects, and they're pretty solid CCNRs and the HOAs to date. We've, I've been involved with them for 15 years on different projects, and they've, we've not had any, any failures, so feel pretty good about it.
Please thank your design team for the moving of the air conditioner, because that was a huge issue for me. I just thought it was. And now, it's fixed going forward.
Yes.
As you said, it's kind of been a comment on every project, so.
You're right.
Now, they fixed it. So, I really appreciate that, because I just, it was.
Kind of stuck out, didn't it?
Just stuck out for me. Thank you. So, somebody from the audience want to make a public comment? Did you come to the podium? Pardon? To the podium. You're going up, I'm a real derouser, you know, when you're out on Bossa Road, and I've been around longer as, longer as Carl. Anyway, my concern was, you're making smaller houses, and you're going to put your garages in the back, right?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Okay, so, what kind of a backyard are you going to have?
There will be no backyard. Each home has a patio, but there will be no front yard or backyard, for that matter, for these properties. And, you know, we're not, you know, I wouldn't recommend building out half the city with this type of product, but having this product in strategic locations, I think the city needs. We don't have a different variety, other than the standard, single-family home. So, not everybody wants to live in a home with a big yard and maintain a yard. So, by providing this option, we are diversifying our, our housing stock and providing more choices to Galt residents.
We have young children. Where are they going to play?
It is across the street from a park, so.
Send them all to the park.
You know, there's community park. And actually, I live near a subdivision similar to this in Elk Grove, and I do see children, you know, playing in the community areas and the paseos, you know, throwing balls in the alley. So, there are children that do live in them, and, you know, I come from an area that we didn't have a lot of yard space growing up, and we still found, found places to play. So, children, find a place to play.
Hope so. Thank you. Any further public comment? Public hearing is closed. Staffs requested we take each one of these items separately. So, there's a resolution approving the California Environmental Quality Act, initial study mitigated negative declaration, and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. Do I have any further comment?
Moved. Second.
Resolution is, motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Malsen. Any further comment? Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0 vote. Resolution approving the proposed general plan amendment, specific plan amendment rezone, besting tentative subdivision map and design review. Any further discussion?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Molson, second by Councilmember Campion. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0 vote. Three, introducing ordinance approving the proposed rezone for the Veranda at River Oaks project, wait full reading and continue to the next meeting for adoption.
Move the item.
Have a motion by Councilmember Cruz.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Campion. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0 vote. Regular calendar, Treasurer's Office. Treasurer Sean Farrell.
No, we never get there, huh?
We're going to get there sometime tonight. Before you, you have the Treasurer's Report ending March 2018. It's really, I want to talk about the first calendar quarter, the third fiscal quarter. In January, the federal funds rate rose 25 basis points, or .25. And when that happens, as rates rise, the majority of the city's portfolio, and that's about 62% of it, we have invested in callable government agencies with step-up features, which means as rates rise, over a period of time, those agencies will also rise. So they'll just simply step up as those rates go up. Also, when rates rise, the LIF rate will also see an increase. This past quarter, or at the end of March, the LIF rate was 1.52. The overall city portfolio ending March was earned 1.66%. This time last year, it was about half that. So that's, when you see and hear about the federal funds rate goes up, that's, it just means some additional interest dollars that the city is earning. The overall, speaking of interest, the amount that we have for the first three quarters for the city, we earn $386,202. There is a CD that's coming up for maturity in 11 days with Farmers and Merchants Bank. It's currently at a rate of .95. This was a three-year CD. Now, if you think, three years ago, .95 was fantastic, okay? But in today's world, it's not so much. So I think when I negotiate with Farmers and Merchants to talk about that, I'll probably narrow that down. Instead of three-year, I'll probably ask for a two-year CD, and we'll see what kind of rate we finally settle on. If the council has any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them, but I ask that you accept the Treasurer's Report for March 2018.
Any questions?
No.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Molson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. City Council's Office Discretionary Funds, we have a public comment. Sherri Daly.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Sherri Daly, I live in the city, and I've spoken on this issue a number of times. This is probably about the fourth or fifth time that I've brought attention to it. My thoughts about a discretionary fund, or as I like to call it, the slush fund, was that when it was created, which was predating all of you up here, so I don't think you created this, but the original intention, I believe, was so that council members would stay out of taxpayers' money. So if they had something small that they needed in order to serve us better, for instance, they want to go to a conference that could make them a better council member, or they needed a piece of equipment to communicate with us better, they wouldn't have to continually be entering the budget and going in and out. So that was why this discretionary fund was set up. But what it's become is a council member's ability to give taxpayer money to their favorite charities. And I, I'm not picking on any of you individually, like I said, you didn't create it, but I find that fundamentally wrong. And the reason why I'm speaking on it again tonight is, it's kind of starting to feel like that relative that says, you know, "I'm really down on my luck, I've lost my job. Can I borrow a couple hundred dollars?" And then the next time you see them, they've got brand-new tennis shoes on. And you kind of think, wow, did I get taken on that one? So I've attended meetings pretty faithfully, and I do believe the sincerity that you all put forward about our parks being in disrepair. You know, we had Mr. Solis explain that some of the slides are gone, so the kids, I guess, just jump off the edge for fun now. So it's pretty desperate. So I think it would be a really good idea if our governing body started the belt tightening by contributing their discretionary funds until January 1st, 2020, to our parks so our kids could have decent play equipment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Okay. Councilmember Campion?
Yes, I had asked to have this put on the agenda. I had asked for an allocation of $400 for the Harvest Carnival Community Outreach Event, which is held every October, open to the public, primarily serves young children and provides a safe harbor for Halloween as an alternative. It's been a very successful event and very well-attended over the years. And then, secondly, $600 I would like to have allocated to the Ray House Museum. Currently, its roof needs to be repaired. This is only going to be a small portion of it, but there's other ongoing maintenance issues as well, but I know that they do need to address the roof. I think that, in this case, the, you know, the city originally had that property. We were in partners with the Historical Society.
Yes, we were.
They have taken it over and are maintaining it. I think it's an appropriate use of funds, and would ask for council's approval.
And the Historical Society has come back time to time in the past, so that's, yeah, it's not unheard of. And in, oh, public disclosure, I was on the council that started discretionary funds. But, you know, if you look around town, those "Keep Kids Alive, Drive 25" signs, even though they're not, can't use them for the speed limit, that, you know, I was paid for by those funds at that time. So I think in transparency, though, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea for us as a council to, you know, publish a list periodically, maybe once a year, whatever, what all the funds are used for, because it comes up in pieces at council meetings, but the public would have to go to all the council meetings and put the pieces together. So maybe, you know, it'd be real easy with computers now, and our finance directors, you could just pop out a report and say, here's what you spent, and what you spent it for. That's my two cents.
I think it's a good idea.
So my money this year went to, my discretionary fund went back to the city to be used for the Independence Day celebration. So I, since I've been, I just want to respond, since I've been on the council, I have not spent any discretionary funds on any of, my monies have always gone back to the cities to help, back to the city to help pay for a project, like the Lincoln Highway signs. I paid, my discretionary funds paid for the installation of the Lincoln Highway signs, so, and I know Count Vice Mayor Cruz's discretionary funds have been spent on honoring our veterans with the, with the flags, starting that program. So discretionary funds have been spent in some really productive ways. Okay, do we have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second.
Make a motion, motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember, Councilmember Molson. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0 vote. City Attorney's Office, resolution calling for an election to ask voters whether the office of the city clerk shall be appointed by the city council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have before you this evening a resolution to put a measure on the ballot to change the elected city clerk position that you currently have to an appointed position, and to consolidate that measure so that it would then be put on the November 6, 2018, general election ballot. Just to clarify, this was something we're bringing forward, I'm giving the agenda report, but it was a discussion with many folks, including the city clerk and the city manager, as to whether this should be brought forward again. It was my understanding that the last time it was brought forward, that this measure went on the ballot, that it lost narrowly. And so there was some thought that maybe there was a miss, potentially misconceptions that, as to why they were, what eliminating the elected city clerk would mean. At the time, now you have obviously an elected city clerk and a clerk administrator who are both in the same position, Ms. Settles, who's doing a wonderful job. And so she is responsible, as the city clerk, to oversee the elections, update the municipal code, she makes sure public records acts are addressed, records retention schedules are addressed. When you have an elected city clerk, the election, elected city clerk just has to meet the requirements for an election to be a city Galt resident. But obviously, some of the duties that now come with the position and the job, with the clerk administrator position, involve a lot more. And so a number of cities, by the research we did, it looked like there's about 75% of cities in California now have gone to an appointed city clerk because of this, the stretch of the duties. And so usually, you can't have just an elected city clerk doing the job. You really need somebody else that's an employee of the city that's there full-time doing the job. So depending on who your elected city clerk is, that may not always work out to have just one person. So that is why we decided to go ahead and bring this forward again, because, because you have an elected city clerk and clerk administrator who are both the same person, it makes for a very smooth transition at this time to, if the voters approve it, to make that change. So obviously, that's at the discretion of the voters, whether they want to do that. I think there's a question about the cost savings. We estimated the cost savings at $24,000 because the elected city clerk is entitled to benefits, as is clerk administrators, the full position. So if you happen to have two people, there is additional cost to having the two people filling those positions. So we thought it made sense to bring it back for consideration and to put back on the ballot in November.
And it costs how much to put it on the ballot and let the citizens decide?
I think that the estimated cost was about 800.
I believe that's from the staff report, yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody knew that. And we're talking about spending 800 bucks here to allow the citizens of Galt to make this decision. It has potential $24,000 savings, and we get one person instead of two. And we can also pick qualified people.
Would clarify that the appointment would be made by the city council.
Right. That's correct.
Do we have any public comment?
So if in another year, say it was another person that was elected, are you going to have a requirement where the same person has both jobs? Is that a requirement of the job?
It's not a requirement, be, oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
You want to go ahead and answer that?
Sure. So it's not a requirement that you have two people. It has just, has kind of become that with Ms. Settles filling the position of the clerk administrator, and then the elected city clerk. Right now, the position is an elected position, so it has to be filled by an election. And then because of the job duties entailed, you have the two positions. If you were to move to an appointment, you would only have the one position. You wouldn't have the election any further for the city clerk.
And with the, if we combine the two positions, and the city council gets to basically hire the city clerk. And so we can determine the qualifications for that position, the educational backgrounds, all that.
Correct.
If we don't, an elected city clerk needs what to be a city clerk again? 18 years old and a citizen?
City resident, and there's some, because of the type of position, there's some other issues with criminal convictions, but...
Okay. That's the big difference in my mind, you know, is it's getting to be a more technical position, and you can't just get basically elected in, walk into it. You know, you've got to be, you've got to be in the mix to really do the job.
Well, the position's evolved.
Yes, it has.
And the code hasn't kept up with what the changes have been, and so essentially, we'd be eliminating the, assuming the voters approve it, you would eliminate the clerk administrator position, and then you would just, it would be all consolidated into one position.
Correct. So the idea was that because of the duties entailed, obviously, Settles can, has been doing both positions, but if you had different people doing them, it, sometimes it's difficult for an elected city clerk to do all of those duties, particularly as an elected official. Sometimes they have other jobs, and it is really a full-time job. So that is why we were suggesting that the voters consider making an appointed position.
Good point.
When it was on the ballot, the last time, the city clerk, Liz Aguirre at the time, asked for it to be put on the ballot because she absolutely felt that it should be an appointed position in the region. There are just very few elected city clerks left. They are appointed. I just, I don't mean to put you on the spot, Donna, but do you support putting this on the ballot?
Yes, I do.
And we're really fortunate. I talked to somebody at a league meeting one day that they actually had, they didn't have two positions, but they had an elected city clerk that had no experience, no qualifications, and they had to go out and hire then someone to be the administrator.
Correct.
So they were paying the city clerk benefits and all sorts of things, basically, to do nothing because they needed to have the professional to be able to carry on the duties. And we're, so we're very fortunate that we've been able to, all these years, have one person fill both jobs. And at one time, it was just one position, and then it was divided because it became so technical. So I would, if there's any further comment, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Huer, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molson?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0 vote. Community Development Department, front yard landscaping and maintenance.
Now back, Chris Arias, Community Development Director. The item you have before you is a presentation on front yard landscaping and maintenance requirements, also known as brown lawns. This is in response to the issue of brown lawns that was brought up at city council at the end of last year due to watering restrictions. Many homeowners were letting their lawns go, so it was brought up as a concern.
It's actually, not to interrupt you, but it actually was brought up by a builder who's built in our community for a very long time, and he was very concerned about it causing a home value issue in, you know, him selling his homes that he was building here in town, that it was a concern of his.
No, exactly. And I think, you know, it's an important topic, and I'm glad you jumped in, because I did want to state that rather than me monologuing up here again, if you have questions or comments as I'm moving forward, please chime in. Rusty Hughes, our city's code enforcement officer, is also here to help answer questions as we go. So please, please jump in as you see fit. This is actually part of our strategic plan, too, so it is an important item. With this presentation, I've broken it into three categories. One is we'll cover development requirements, maintenance requirements, and then our plan to gain compliance. Front yard landscaping is important. Not only does it help beautify a neighborhood and city, a well landscaped yard adds value to a home, and the reverse is true. So this is why front yard landscaping is important. And through the presentation, we're going to have a number of different photos, and none of the homes are in Galt, and we did that specifically. And I'd like to add...
I was going to ask.
This home is actually in Niagara Falls, New York, and was the home I was raised in. So that was my childhood home.
Oh, you had a...
And it is a very, there is really no backyard. It was essentially a garage, and we did okay. The first component to the presentation, again, will focus on the development code requirements for front yard landscaping. And our code states that no more than 50% of the front yard can be paved with hardscape. This excludes the driveway and any walkway. And then it further states of that landscape area, 50, a minimum of 50% has to be living material. And I think this photo on the screen really embodies that, you know, just from a casual observance. You can see that the landscaped area has good living material, and I think as it matures, it will grow even bigger. it will grow even bigger, and then a variety of nice decorative rock. And what I also like about this photo is that it shows that you can have a good landscaped front yard without using grass. So this is a drought tolerant approach that still looks really good. The code also requires that no more than 50% of a subdivision can have grass or turf, and that every home must have an automatic irrigation plan, including a moisture sensing As your certified tree hugger, an important part of the front yard landscape requirement is the planting of a street tree in the front of the home. The intent of the tree requirement is so that when the tree matures, not only does it provide shade for the home, it also provides a canopy over the sidewalk and at least partial street. Both of these scenarios show a separated sidewalk, but even with the roll curve in sidewalk, you could get a tree, a good tree canopy over the sidewalk and partial street. And this photo shows the stark difference between the two, but the reality is, most neighborhoods are kind of a mixture. But I think it's easy to see which neighborhood is a little bit more attractive and probably better to live in.
Probably cooler, too.
Well, I think the tree canopy one is more desirable. If you go into the older neighborhoods, that is one of the best features. You know, I've often said that a tree, a street tree, is the only city resource that appreciates over time. All the others depreciate. And I think most people know the value of having a tree canopy or a tree in the front yard, that it cuts cooling costs, helps purify the air, adds value to the neighborhood, so they are important. And I would like to add on the street tree that, you know, those code requirements that I mentioned earlier, homeowners are able to change that as they move in, but the one thing they can't change or remove is the street tree. They are required to have Community Development Department approval to remove that street tree. And I know if you drive through the city, you'll see many homes without them. Some are older, and some just didn't know. So as part of our education campaign, which I'll talk about later, it will include educating them on a street tree requirement. All new development is required to provide a landscape plan, which will show us a typical interior and corner lot plan. The example shown on the screen shows you what we usually get for a subdivision. The plan will identify the plant type and location, as well as detail on an irrigation plan. And what staff then does is make sure this plan conforms to the other code requirements. The landscaping is then inspected by our building inspector as part of the home inspection. And really, for a single-family residential, that really concludes what we look for in single-family residential landscaping components. The next part of the presentation is going to focus on maintenance. And development code requires front yard maintenance, which includes the regular mowing, pruning, clearing of debris, fixing irrigation, and the regular watering of the plants if needed. And since the state of California is not in a declared water emergency, the city can enforce watering. However, I would like to remind homeowners that the city does have watering days that they should adhere to, and adhering to those watering days will ensure that you have healthy living plants and then keep you out of trouble with the Public Works Department. The topic of the front yard landscaping is so important to the city that we actually have another section dedicated to it. And this section will do more than just landscaping. This chapter requires that the physical appearance of the property, visible from the right-of-way, including the building facade, be maintained. So the next handful of slides are just a series of photos to kind of give you an idea of what we might find. And again, these are not in Galt. And I'd like to say that, you know, some are more challenging than others, and so that's the intent of, you know, these photos. And the first one, you can see, to us is really rather simple. I mean, all they need to do is cut the grass and trim the bushes, and they're probably going to be good to go. This one might be a little bit more challenging if we were to encounter this home. There's more than landscaping issues here, and if they were just to try to clean the yard, we might find that they have a lot of bare dirt. And the city does not allow bare dirt in the front yard. And they might have blighting issues, too, as you move forward, because that other code that I talked about does address blighting conditions. This one could be a little bit more challenging. It's actually well-maintained, you know, but you can't, sometimes it's hard to gauge taste, and we don't know if, you know, that's like decomposed granite or bare dirt. And then the vehicle in the back is probably meant to be artwork, but, you know, we often say that one person's definition of art is another's of garbage. So that could be, that's going to be a recurring theme as we move forward. This one could be simple for us to dress, where you have them remove the boat, you know, clean up the landscaping, and, you know, they actually have the bones of a good, you know, layout and could end up looking pretty decent. This isn't the most decorative landscaping, but once the vehicle's removed and perhaps a little bit of seed on some of the bare areas, bare areas, that this could actually look pretty good. Now, this home, you know, it doesn't have landscaping issues. You know, I think, I was told that this is the Public Works Director's home, and we always knew it was a little bit of a pirate at heart. And it's obviously not a landscape issue, but you would wonder how it passed design review as it went through building permit. So it is, you know, and again, it goes back to that definite, you know, that art versus garbage. And not that this is garbage, because that's pretty well-maintained.
No, but canopies is legal now.
Right.
Would that not be a seascape?
Here's another one. I think this is a cheese vacation home. You know, definitely not a.
I see.
Not a landscape issue, but again, one of those that could be more, be difficult to address because if it's well-maintained, is it just artwork that can be a challenge for us to address? This was an actual code case in the Midwest somewhere.
That guy lived next to me in Ohio.
You know, and it, for us, we think it would be pretty simple to address. There's a lot of landscape issues going on, the garbage in front. The bug in the tree could be a little bit of a challenge, though. Again, is it artwork or is it?
Bug in the tree?
You know, a hazard. And so we would worry about the public safety component of that part. So now that we've identified the issue, kind of shown you our requirements, the next step is what do we plan to do about it? And our first step is really to educate the public on what they should do or what they can do. And we did start that process already in the March utility bill. We did send out this insert that was informational, basically talking about what we do require. We did include some water conservation information in it, like it's okay to replace, you know, natural turf and grass with artificial, upgrade sprinkler heads and controllers to be more efficient. That can help prevent runoff from the water onto the sidewalk, and then water early morning and late at night to reduce evaporation. We plan to continue that education approach in the upcoming city newsletter. We do have two articles in there. We plan to use the city's Facebook page and also the website to really get that information out. And we specifically chose, we waited and chose spring to do that because we felt we could take advantage of the late winter and early spring rains while everything was green to educate the public. But as spring goes on and comes into summer, that's when the brown lawns will start to appear. So it gave us a little bit of time and a good opportunity to remind people, as we come along those summer months, this is the time to start considering your maintenance. So after we're finished with this educational campaign, we do plan to ramp up code enforcement, at least in the more visible areas. We don't have the manpower to go and patrol all neighborhoods, so we will continue to respond to complaints and then hit those more visible locations.
Well, I believe I've mentioned this in the past, that, you know, our goal here is not to have blight in brown lawns. So compliance is the real goal. And education and grants, if it's possible, to help people out. I don't know if we have any, but, you know, we ought to investigate that kind of stuff. That would be the first thing you would really want, is compliance. And then if not, then Rusty flips the card over to where it says enforcement, he's got the hammer on it. But you really don't want to get there until you get to last resort, you know?
And that's a great point. And, you know, as always, our approach is to gain compliance, and Rusty actually has always done a great job.
Yes.
In getting compliance without having to find people. I think his record speaks for itself, and, you know, we don't plan to really change that approach, that we will go with compliance. And if we have to get to those more difficult cases, then we need to be prepared, though, to deal with those. But I'm confident that through, with the education process, through our being more proactive in the visible areas and then responding to complaints, I think we can help tackle that issue. So at any rate, that concludes our presentation. Again, we, you know, the goal here was just to give you an idea of what we expect for new development, let you know we do have the ability to enforce maintenance, so we've showed that, and then what our plan is moving forward. And that is two-pronged, you know, education and then compliance. We don't like to flip the card and go enforcement. So with that, you know, that concludes our presentation. Rusty Hughes and I will be available to answer questions or take further direction if warranted.
Well, I'd like to tell everybody, if they really want to look at a yard that got rid of their brown lawn, you just have to look at Vice Mayor Cruz's yard. He has a low maintenance, low, low-water yard and, you know.
Couldn't get the kids to mow it, huh?
Yeah. Even in our new developments, like the Elliott development, where they chose not to put in turf, and they put in landscaping. I know my daughter's front yard is beautiful. She's added a lot more plants than they originally put, but it's beautiful.
Yeah, they've got three and four in my neighborhood, too, that are, did a good job.
The Beautification Committee, I know, has, one of the houses that they picked a couple of months ago was a low-water, you know, beautiful front yard.
Chris, does the city still require at least one model in new subdivisions to be zerscape?
We do.
You do?
That is in the northeast area.
Okay.
So that wasn't a requirement throughout the city. I believe that was just a requirement of Northeast area specific plan. But if we phase that out, as we talked about, that could be a good item to keep as we move forward.
Okay.
And actually, with the state requirements, the state still does allow turf, but landscape architects have to do a water balance with the home. So if they're using too much water in other areas, like the trees or shrubs, then they might be limited on turf. So it could be a good idea to really move that forward to the citywide.
Just because of the water balance in the state laws, is that why some builders are going to, does there escape or bark in the fronts?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you. Finance Department. Subject fiscal year 2017, 2018, third quarter financial review. Ms. Boyd.
Good evening, Mayor Huer, members of the council. I'm Emily Boyd, Finance Director for the city, and this is your financial review for the third quarter of fiscal year 1718. That's the period that ended March 31st of 2018. All operating funds are tracking in line with budget projections, and there's no unusual activity to report. Basically, the funds that are reported on in the staff report, and once again, I've done the same thing that I've done before, which is I know different people accept information in different ways. So there is a narrative in the staff report. There's graphs here in the PowerPoint, and there are also a lot of tables with all of the financial information for those who are interested in receiving information in that manner. So we're talking about general discretionary funds, supplemental police funds, lighting and landscaping funds, and utility funds. I'm not going to cover all of these in the PowerPoint, but they are all covered in the tables and in the narrative in the staff report. The general fund is tracking on, on record, is tracking evenly with budget so far this year. You'll see the total revenue there is 5.9 million. That's 53.2% of the projected budget. When I say it's on target, it's because the timing on when we receive property taxes and sales taxes is not received evenly throughout the year. We get a big lump sum in January, we get a big lump sum in June. So you'll see the bottom two bars there are, the bottom one is property taxes. It looks like it's about 50% received, and the next to the bottom is other taxes, and that includes sales tax and transient occupancy tax and so forth. And that one is about 50% received. General fund expenditures and encumbrances year-to-date are 9.2 million, which is 63% of the budget. Once again, this year, we seem to be tracking our expenditures a little below budget, which is always a better thing than being above budget, so I'm happy about that. At this point in the year, if everything was even, it would be 75% spent as of this point, but it's, at this point, 63%. The footnote there that says does not include encumbrances, that's referring to the graph, not to the number 9.2. And parks and rec revenue so far this year, 2.4 million received, 72.6% of budget. That's much closer to the 75 that you normally would have. The reason for that is that the parks and rec revenue is not seasonal in the way that the general fund's revenue is received. And parks and rec expenditures are 2.2, or 63.8% of the budget year-to-date. So I wanted to, I didn't have an opportunity thus far this year to talk about the June 30, 2017 financial report that was presented to you a month or two ago, and what, how we would interpret that report. How is that report useful to us? What information does it give us that will help us, help guide us when we're trying to plan the finances of the city? And one of the ways that financial reports are often evaluated is through certain ratios, and I've included three of those here. The first ratio is current assets to current liabilities. And the red there, the government's ratio, should be closer to 2% or higher. These are, the red is a recommendation, it's general practices or how it's generally viewed where a government should be. In this case, what I've done is I've lumped together the governmental funds and the business-type activities. Now, business-type activities are the utility funds. That's the water, the sewer, the storm drain, and the solid waste. Governmental funds are all of the other funds. That's the general fund and all the special revenue funds, like gas tax and major R and all of the capital grant funds, and all of those funds are lumped together there. If you look at the financial statements, the first statements presented are called these government-wide statements. And what they do is they give you a picture of the government as a whole. We'll see that here that our current ratio is a lot greater than 2%, so in that respect, we're doing pretty good. And then here's just a bar graph showing a five-year period of where the current ratio's been. And the next ratio I want to talk about is capital asset sustainability. And this one talks about how quickly are you replacing assets? Are you replacing assets in the same ratio in which they're depreciating? Or are they depreciating faster than you're replacing them? And that becomes a concern, and that's what we find here in Galt, is that our assets are depreciating faster than we're replacing them. And we've seen evidence in that in some of the recent presentations, particularly Parks and Rec to the city. Parks and Rec is one of the governmental funds. It's not a business-type activity. What you would really want to see is a ratio of one-to-one, that you're replacing assets at the same rate at which they're depreciating. Unfortunately, we're not seeing that here. The ratio is less than a one-to-one ratio. And it kind of bears out what we've been saying for some time now, is that we have a great need in deferred, deferred maintenance needs in vehicles and building facility maintenance and streets and roads and all of the capital assets of the city. We have a great need to start replacing those or updating them faster than we have been doing. And there's just a five-year bar graph of the experience with that ratio. The other ratio that I want to talk about was interperiod equity. This is when your costs of the current services are paid by the current year revenues. And sometimes, you've probably heard this referred to as a balanced budget, is when your expenses equal your revenues or vice versa, your revenues are equal to your expenses. We've had a situation in the last couple of years where, in our general fund, this has not been the case, where we have dipped into fund balance to meet our current expenses. And that's something that staff is working very hard right now on preparing the budget for, that will be presented to you in another month or two, working very hard to attempt to get this budget balanced. budget balanced. And one of the challenges, of course, on balancing a governmental budget is that expenditures increase at a faster rate than revenues increase. And revenues are, the primary revenues of the city are property tax, and property tax is limited by Proposition 13. So it does not increase at a rate as fast as inflation, or as fast as personnel costs go up, or as fast as supplies and materials costs go up. So you have this challenge all the time of how are you going to balance this budget when you have that sort of built-in in equity? So that was the general fund I was just talking about. When you look at the city as a whole, things are looking pretty good. The business-type activities, their current-period revenues are covering their current-period expenditures. And governmental activities, current-period revenues are covering current-period costs. And what this says to me is that, you know, although we've had challenges balancing our general fund, we've also are in a position where we are in a pretty fairly, fairly stable condition. The caveat to all of this is that many of the government funds are restricted in how you could use them. So included in the government funds are things like the gas tax is in there. Now, gas tax you can only use for streets and roads improvements. And there's the major Rs in there. And I'm naming these funds because they're more familiar to people. There's also a TDA fund, which is Transportation Fund, and there's also some capital project funds that are included in there. So what we have here, in my view, is we are posed at a great opportunity right now. We have many good things financially about the city, and we have many challenges, particularly that. If we don't start looking at our capital needs and improvements in our capital assets, we're going to continue to experience things like having to shut down playgrounds because we can't replace the equipment, or we're going to have continued problems with our roads. So, you know, I'm kind of passionate about it because this is really one of the most critical things that we face right now. Any questions?
Just two.
Yes?
You know, we keep coming, having this question. Year-to-date, how much has the general fund subsidized Fund VI, which is our Parks and Rec? I believe it's in the staff report, but I asked a question for our audience.
So do you know the answer offhand?
Nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars is what I got.
Is that year-to-date or is that the annual budget?
It's annual.
Good question. I have year-to-date so far.
It's year-to-date. See how I turned that around on you?
Yeah, I did, yeah.
Any other questions that you could answer?
The next five to seven years, I think there's a comment in there that one of our, the elephant in the room is the retirement.
That's absolutely true.
So, you know, we're talking, you know, people, you know, beat us up all the time about, you know, keeping reserves and all that good stuff. But that elephant is looming in five to seven years, and it's a big one. And we've got to understand ways of trying to address that, starting now, in the budget coming up.
Yes, I absolutely agree with you. Part of what we've been working on is a long-term financial plan, where we're projecting that unfunded pension liability out to, I think, 2024, kind of see where we're at with that. Early projections are that the contribution the city is required to make to CalPERS towards unfunded liability will double in the next five years. So that's approximately, over the course of five years, a million dollars in the miscellaneous group and another million dollars in the safety group. And safety is almost all general fund. Miscellaneous is some general fund, but some of miscellaneous group is also in the utility fund. So it is going to be a challenge to try and meet that. We'll talk more about that.
I'm sure we will.
So, I have a question. Anybody else have a question? Kind of went on my head, but I was going to ask.
I had a couple that were answered in the presentation.
So the deferred maintenance issue.
Yes.
In the long-term, in the long-term plan we're currently developing, are you proposing in that long-term plan that money be put aside for deferred maintenance, that we start address, I mean, we currently, the Parks and Rec, I think what it is, somewhere around 1.2 million dollars or something that we talked about in deferred maintenance need. And previously, previous city councils, previous city management hadn't really, everything was being built at the same time. Nobody really thought, nobody put money away for the replacement issue.
Right.
Whether it's vehicles, whether it's the turf out in Walker Park, I mean, all these things, it was great to open up a swimming pool, and nobody thinks about, well, we got 10 years from now that we're going to need to replace all this equipment. And so in part of the long-term planning, are you planning on addressing that issue? Because that's really concerned me. That, I mean, I think that we are now stuck in a situation in which we have to figure out how we're going to meet those deferred maintenance needs because previously that wasn't being addressed. And, you know, there's a few things that cities do that are important to me. I want safe streets.
Mm-hmm.
I want safe parks, and I want good parks, right? I mean, lots of other things that government doesn't do, you know, lots of things that government does. But those are the things that are really important to me, right? That I want to have safe, clean streets, that I want to have safe, clean parks. I want to, that's what's important to me for a city.
Right.
So I think those deferred maintenance issues, that we've got to address it.
Yes.
Because it's probably the thing that concerns me the most.
Yes. I believe that as part of our strategic plan, we talked about developing what are called internal service funds. An internal service fund is a fund in which you do set aside money for replacement. Let me just talk briefly about it in terms of, let's use vehicles as an example. So you have a fleet, you have vehicles that need to be routinely replaced. If you want safety, you're going to need to have your police vehicles routinely replaced and so forth. And your utility vehicles.
Well, and I do want clean water and air.
Yeah, we're going to have to replace those ones, too. So what the, what we're working on is a proposal to establish three internal service funds. One for vehicles, one for building and facilities maintenance, and one for information technology. Those are fairly common internal service funds in cities. What we will need to do to get those started is we will need to ask the council to provide, or to approve some seed money for it. And that would mean dipping into, into available general fund balance to provide some seed money for those. And how a plan like that would work is we would on vehicles, we have an inventory of vehicles, we know what vehicles we have, we know when we need to replace them, we have an estimate on what the replacement cost would be. So we can do that math and calculate, how much do we need in each year to keep vehicles replaced and current? We're behind the curve right now because we haven't been keeping up with our vehicles. And so it's going to take a few years to get totally caught up and get the program working. What we need to do is the seed money, as I said. And then what happens, instead of budgeting in our regular operating budget to purchase vehicles, what we budget in the regular operating budget is to transfer money from the general fund, say, and into the internal service fund for the replacement, for the future replacement of vehicles. And that's based upon the schedule, which is developed on when vehicles need to be replaced. So what you're doing each year, instead of having this continual sort of, you know, scramble to say, well, I need this vehicle, correct. It's that, we're trying to get away from that sort of crisis financial management and get into some long-term financial planning. And the way you do that, if I could relate it back to, you know, your personal finances, if you know you have a big expenditure coming up, a lot of people will set aside funds for that big expenditure when they need to make it. And that's kind of essentially what we would be doing with an internal service fund.
Saving up for it.
Correct.
Yeah, you could go on a two-year vehicle replacement plan, let's say, so you actually save up enough so every two years you can replace certain vehicles.
Yeah, you could.
There's all kinds of dynamics and plans you could put into it, depending on the price of the vehicle.
Right.
Maybe you'll buy two vehicles one year and some exotic one for the wastewater plant or something that you may have to.
They need things like boom trucks and forklifts, and I don't know what all they need over there.
Expensive.
So, yeah, there's a number of different ways you can structure it. Our goal is to produce a proposal and bring it back to you. I don't know exactly when, but we're going to try and tie that in with the budget. We've been working really hard on this, so I can't make promises to you, but this is what our plan is.
Okay. So my other question is, earlier this year, or about earlier this year, later last year, last year, you made the recommendation, because I've received some questions about it, you made the recommendation to increase our reserve policy from 20% to 25%.
That's correct.
That was a policy decision.
Mm-hmm.
We, at the time, had received some one-time funds that would allow us to be able to do that. You know, as a young woman, I always remember going to my first financial planning kind of class, and they told me I should have six months of my salary in savings. I guess there's some misunderstanding sometimes in the community about what a reserve fund is.
Correct.
And why we have a reserve fund. Can you, I don't want to put you on the spot to do a long presentation, but I just think there needs to be some clarity about what a reserve fund is and why we have a reserve fund.
Yeah, I'd be absolutely delighted to talk about that. And I will keep it brief because I know our meeting has run out a little long tonight. And financial stuff is hard to hear when you're tired. In the staff report, I talk about the general fund balance in there. And on page two of the staff report, oh, no, sorry, page four of the staff report, there's a table that talks about general fund balance. And general fund balance is composed of a number of different things. One of them is, is what amounts are committed already. And a committed thing is something that, if you've already issued a purchase order for something, you've committed that money, even if you haven't already spent it. Other things are restricted funds. Sometimes in the general fund, we have some grant money that we haven't spent yet, so that's restricted. And there's things that are non-spendable in fund balance. That would be things like inventories, which you're not really, that's not really cash, you're not going to spend it unless you get a situation where you're going to sell it. But, you know, you really don't want to do that, five cents on the dollar or something. But I digress. The other types of fund balance are the fund balance reserve, which is 25% of the annual expenditures of the general fund plus the Parks and Rec fund. Now, 25% is the recommended best practice. When I say recommended, that's recommended by the GFOA, that's the Government Finance Officers Association. And they basically, it's a professional organization that basically issues a lot of best practices, a lot of interpretations of GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board, and does a lot of work with aiding us in this business in understanding how it's best to manage the, manage the finances of a municipal organization. So there is that, and there is also the available fund balance. Now, sometimes reserves and available get mixed up. But available means that amount left over after all of those other things that I mentioned is called available. If you look in your budgets, when you look at Schedule IV in our budgets, beginning balance on Schedule IV is the available fund balance. It's not the total audited fund balance because much of that is reserved or restricted. So what we have there is the available fund balance. That's the amount that we can prudently go ahead and use and, for something, whatever it is. You want to make sure that, when you're thinking about using available general fund balance, that you use it for one-time things. Because it's not a revenue stream, it's just the money you have sitting in the bank, as savings, so to speak. I could go on, but.
And if you keep dipping into it, then you end up in a situation where cities go bankrupt, right?
That's correct.
I always remember when we went into the recession, even though at that point, they did keep a 20, even though the policy was a 20%, they actually did have more than a 20% in reserves. The previous councils had, had built up a bigger reserve than that. So we went into the recession actually in better shape than, because then they needed to dip into that reserve.
Right.
They needed to change the policy. They needed to dip into that reserve to handle the crisis.
Right.
To be able to pay our employees, to be able to do the things, keep the lights on, do the things we need to do while we were losing revenue.
Correct.
And so I guess, for me, it's really important that we, even though at this point in time, you know, the economy is doing well, interest rates, I mean, we had the Treasury's report, you know, every, every economic forecast that I listen to or economic person, and whether that was last Friday at the Greater Sacramento and listening to their economy people, and even yesterday, they all talk about 2020 worries them. They don't know what's going to happen about 2020. And, you know, we need to prepare for that 2020 or that 2025, or, or what might happen. And
Yes.
I think the reserves are how we do it. It doesn't mean that in time of crisis, if we had a major earthquake, if we had a major catastrophe, that we wouldn't, that we would have that savings or that money to be able to sustain us while we recover.
Correct. I absolutely agree.
The CFD presentation earlier kind of alluded to that. They're probably funded very similar to a city. When a recession hits, it hits population like right now. Cities, they go along fat, happy, and dumb because they're unaffected. Give it a year, and then boom, they get hit.
Yeah.
Then everybody's doing good again. The economy's rolling, right? Not so much for the cities. It takes them a year or two to recover. That's why you have those, those reserves, is to buffer that.
Right.
Otherwise, you get big dips in the recession, and it's hard to recover.
Well, one of the facts about this economy is that recessions happen, and they happen fairly regularly. So the economists couldn't predict, you know, not with 100% accuracy, of course, no one can. But they can predict that another recession will be in our future.
Budgets are cyclical, cyclical.
Yeah, exactly.
Ups and downs, right? Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you, Emily.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can talk about.
Parks and Rec Department, special event sponsorship program applications. Mr. Solis?
I'm sure you cringe every time I walk up here, but Steve, you're doing a great job. Cost savings on the air conditioning. Really appreciate that. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. In 2017, the City Council approved the special event sponsorship policy. At the May 15th council meeting, staff will review, provide, excuse me, City Council will review, provide direction to staff regarding the events, monetary amounts, and in-kind contributions. At that time, I'll be providing you the actual estimated cost for each event as what they're requesting for street closures and halls and facilities.
Well, that was all my questions.
I was recently at a nonprofit coalition meeting where the organizations voiced their desire and ability to explain what, what is, that they really do. So I thought this would be a great opportunity for them to come up and speak to you directly and, and explain what their event is versus me trying to explain what their event is. This will also allow council the opportunity to ask any questions that they may have, and allow council the opportunity to digest all the information over a two-week period versus the time for a staff report that is presented to them. I'll bring up the following organizations one at a time in order. Allow them five minutes to present their event to council. It'll be in this order. GALT Community of Character Coalition for the Heritage Festival, GALT FFA Ag Boosters for Farm to Fork, Tiny Smiles, Half Marathon, 5K, 10K, and Kids Run, Vet Tracks for Vet Stock Festival, GALT Sunrise Rotary and Chamber for GALT Toberfest, GALT Chamber of Commerce. I've asked them not to speak on the food truck event, Lighting of the Night, and Extravaganza and Summer Vendor Fair, as we're pretty familiar with those events. But you can ask Gail any questions you may on those. But she will be presenting a GALT Summer Vendor, excuse me, Shamrock Festival and the GALT Street Fair. If you have any questions now, I'd be glad to answer them or wait until after the presentation.
So we're just receiving the reports tonight?
Information only.
And in two weeks, we'll come back and have further discussion.
Yes. So I'd like to call up Barbara Payne with the Heritage Festival.
And then.
Making a dramatic entrance.
And then any questions we have, they've got two weeks to answer them, too, so.
The GALT Community of Character Coalition is the sponsor of the GALT Heritage Festival. The GCC is a nonprofit, open-membership organization. It was created to foster good citizenship and character in the city of GALT to make a better community. The coalition was formed as a partnership of the city, the school system, and the citizens of GALT. The GCC's pledge to uphold the character values is still on display in some of the department, city departments, and was once hung in this very chambers. So I believe it makes sense that the city be a cosponsor for the Heritage Festival. We wanted to locate the Heritage Festival on Fourth Street. We felt that that location would attract people to attend the festival in this beautiful new area, rather than the flea market grounds. But because of the uncertain, extra. But because of the uncertain extra cost to close down the streets by the police and public works, to put barricades, and the delay in knowing these costs, we felt that we couldn't commit to performers to schedule the heritage event. For the type of event we had, we had to schedule people almost a year in advance. And of course, we can't do that. So there will be no Heritage Festival this year. We considered other locations, but they did not seem to be ideal. We felt like the Heritage Festival is and was an important way of celebrating the diversity of the community. We've had six in the past, and we hope maybe to continue in the future when we kind of can predict what our costs are going to be. And we will continue with our program through the schools to develop good character traits for our community. And we look to maybe a future Heritage Festival, but not this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
I also forgot to add that I left a cheat sheet for council before the meeting. I also put them up here at the front for the audience to grab a peek. I basically took the information off of the applications and put it on that one sheet so you can just easily view it as they come up and speak. The highlighted ones are the new events requested for 2018, 19. And at that time, I'd like to bring up a representative of the Galt FFA Ag Boosters.
Thank you.
You want to tell everyone I'm congratulating?
You have to. I can. Our novice parley mentee procedure team won state finals this year, which is exciting. So they get to go back to national convention.
And your chapter was also named?
Oh, yeah. Galt High was named the...
They were one of the finalists in the National Chapter Award, I believe.
Yeah.
Yes.
Sorry. We'll go without it. So, hi, we're representing Liberty Ranch FFA to talk on the Farm to Fork Dinner. And this year was our very first time ever hosting the Farm to Fork Dinner, which was a great success with hosting over 200 guests in downtown Galt. As guests arrived around 6:00 PM, they were greeted by both Galt High and Liberty Ranch FFA members and were treated to local wines from local wineries, and were also served appetizers before being seated for dinner, which was a five-course meal with all ingredients being grown around a 50-mile radius of our city. In addition to that, it was hosted in downtown Galt, as I said, next to the new renovations in landscaping and additional parking spaces. It's essential that we keep it in downtown Galt for the fact that it helps showcase those new renovations and parking spaces as well as bringing back some life into the downtown area and connecting community members together and just showing them where Galt's roots lay, which is in agriculture.
So I'm kind of here to talk about what Ag Boosters does for us. The Ag Boosters program is a vital program for both Galt and Liberty Ranch. Not only do they provide fair, not only do they provide food for those, for both schools who attend fair and the California State Leadership Convention, this year was held in Anaheim. They make sure that no Ag member or Ag student goes, has difficulty getting involved into FFA because of financial difficulties. So they provide scholarships for leadership conferences such as MFE, the Made for Excellence Conference, the Advanced Leadership Academy, and as well as the California Leadership Conference as well. They also provide scholarships to further education for those students who are seniors. This year, I myself applied for the Ag Booster Scholarship as well. And this event is essential not only to put on, not only to give those scholarships to those students who may have financial difficulties, but as well to help grow leaders within our community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amalia. I'm a sophomore from Liberty. And I'd like to thank you for allowing me to talk about the Farm to Fork Dinner to you guys about and what it means to us in FFA. So the Farm to Fork Dinner really relates and goes along the lines of the city's vision statement of how we want our family-oriented community to be united and to create unique, to create a unique city with a small-town atmosphere. This provides not only our community to be involved, but it also provides and lets the community know that although we are turning into, although we are urbanizing, we can still be sustainable. We want the best for our community for, and the Farm to Fork Dinner allows that. It allows the families to come together and to see where we came from, where Galt's roots came from, and to reminisce on what we had before, but to also look forward to the future of the healthy, look forward to a healthy future and the prosper that it comes. So it all starts with you. Thank you.
Is that it? Do you have any questions for them?
Last year, your event was sold out, my understanding. I bought four tickets. Last year, there was discussion, I mean, we had to close the street because it ran down the middle of the street, and the promenade wasn't quite ready electrical-wise. Has there been any discussion about moving it to the promenade so that we weren't having to close down streets?
That was my question, you know, if you'd at least consider that. Now, I walk, I walk at night, and I walk down the promenade, and it's nice. It really is. So I'm thinking, you know, we didn't have that last year, but now we have, we could showcase that on a downtown, the new promenade. So I'm just throwing a question out there, you've got two weeks.
I mean, we, you know, everybody thinks that, you know, closing the streets is a, but it really does disrupt the neighborhoods, and it disrupts response and...
Probably the largest city expense that we have.
Yeah, so just to, just to consider that, you know, I guess I would encourage that we look at the promenade and not having to do the street closures, because I know it was a really successful event. So, you know, we encourage you to continue to have successful events. We want to support your fundraising efforts, but to really look at, does it have to go down the middle of the street? It was nice, but it was...
I'll be...
We went and measured the promenade. That was a really great discussion after last night. Because of the way that the benches are, we're expecting the population to double at the event. We're hoping to get more than 300 or 400 people at the event. We have to do it without tables. Well, we did go and measure since the space has been completed. If we could look at it again, maybe with an expert, they could show us, but it's not a huge, you can't double up the tables. It's not a huge area by the way. If you look at where like there's permanent structures within that space, I'm wondering if it could fit 450 tables.
I'll make an appointment. We can go out there and discuss possibly the temporary removal of benches and see if that's an option, so.
This is requesting closure all the way from C to E. It's a very long area for us to be closing down the street. Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys. Congratulations again.
I'm unsure if I have a representative for Tiny Smiles. I do not. I'd like to bring up Vet Trax for Vet Stock Festival.
I'm going to ask you two questions before I begin. I'd like to think of what did three numbers represent, the number three, the number 22, and 50%. And second question, it's going to come off as a joke, but it's not. Do I look disabled to you? Your answer's probably going to be no. I suffer from PTSD. Excuse if I get emotional. My name's Eric Lewis. I'm the president and owner of Vet Trax Project. My cohort is Jeremy Friedlander. Did 20 years in the Navy. I am 100% disabled veteran. I love the city of Galt. What we do with Vet Trax is we take our veterans that suffer from PTSD, TBI, traumatic brain injury, a lot of them don't want to talk about it. I don't want to talk about it. I hate talking about PTSD publicly, about my personal pain and experience. So how do I do it? I cope, I have therapy through music. We save lives through music. Because the number three, last year's event, Vet Stock Festival, we had three people want to kill themselves. They came up to me and said, "Thank you. I'm not going to kill myself today." 22, that's the number of veterans that kill themselves every day, suffering from PTSD. 50%, 50% of those 22 people don't seek help because we're machismo, we're men, or strong women, we don't need help. I was one of those people. Luckily, my doctor made me see the light. So what I felt to do was, I had a calling, a Kaleo. My son's name is Kaleo, and that means "to this you are called." I have to be around my veterans. I don't care if they're 80, 90, 100 years old, or the fresh 18-year-old veteran. They are my brother and sister. We have a common bond that we don't even have to say anything to each other. We just look at each other, and we know. We share pain. We share experiences. We share, you know, fatherhood, or with my wife, motherhood advice. What Vet Trax does is we take, let's say Jeremy, if he's not a veteran, but let's say he was a veteran, he'd come to me and say, "Hey, brother, I need some help." Okay, well, it's 2:00 in the morning. "I really need help. Come here. Let's go. We'll get you in the studio. Let's just talk about music, or let's write a song, or do you want to learn how to play an instrument?" We'll do that. I've got many, many, many industry-leading sponsors that are vendors. I'm a professional musician. I've been a musician for over 30 years as well. Sorry, I got off base, but with Vet Trax, we are located in Galt, and there's no other place that Vet Stock Festival should be other than Veterans Field. Last year was at the Fair Oaks VFW. The city attorney, I was afraid when we submitted for Vet Stock Festival that people are going to be afraid that, "Oh, I'm tattooed up and I look different than everybody else," or, you know, "Oh, it's a music festival." It's a music festival because we're having fun. It's not like drugs are here, thugs are here, gangbangers, or homeless people are going to be struggling upon, no. It's about celebration of PTSD and how we can overpower, how we don't have to succumb to the inhibitions to want to kill ourselves and to celebrate music. I've got three national acts, well-known, that were signed to record labels. Oleander, they're from Sacramento. Flaw, a big supporter of veterans. And the military police or law enforcement, they back the blue. Smile Empty Souls, another one, they're local as well. However, they're on nationally touring acts. Now, let's just say, off the record, to get these three bands, that would have cost well over $60,000 because of contract reasons. You'll have it in my pamphlets. It's in our expense report. You'll see, take $60,000, what you see on the thing, it was really, really drastically reduced because of our mission. We want to save lives. And my key goal is one, one a day. If I can save them all, I'll do it. I mean, I work at the VA. I can't, I have a SAMs account, I'm a SDV OSB, but I can't contract with the VA because I work in procurement, so I stay back. So with Vet Stock Festival, it does cost a lot of money, and we're asking for a donation. But furthermore, with that, with the revenues that we would earn from the event, it's not just going to go just to veterans. I want to give back to my city. Unofficially, I can't say exactly what amount because we don't have the revenues, but I'm going to give back to the schools. I want to give money to the lunch programs because I know there are people that can't afford lunches for their kids. We do it every year at my son's school. We double pay, and my son will take a kid and go eat lunch with him. It's only money. I don't care. I'd rather see somebody eat. As well as Galt Rotary, one of our sponsors, I want to give back to them. I want, I want people to know what Galt is. They're like, "What's, where's Galt?" "Oh, it's in between Stock and in between Elk Grove." I didn't know where Galt was, but we were fortunate, we got stuck back there in the new development, we bought. And I've actually brought two people to move and live in Galt now, and it's just, it's starting to, it's home. And I just want Vet Stock Festival to be home with Galt. Whether the board chooses to donate or not, at the end of the day, it don't matter to me because this is where we're having it. And I appreciate everybody that gave us a chance to bring it here because I'm telling you, just look at one person that wants to kill themselves and just help them. I've done it myself personally, and it's amazing because there's no amount of money that can, that is worth a life, you know? And I'll be damned, we sold, we saved three in one day just because of music, various kinds of music. But I promise you, there's no like crazy, "roar" music, okay? So it does vary, but, you know, I know our genre and the area. But again, I know it's late, and I just want to thank you guys so much for your time and just attention to this matter because it is very serious. And also, I will give a commitment, next year, I will sponsor Two Flags. You pick the person, I don't care. We will sponsor Two Flags. And my business card is in each one. Obviously, if you have any questions, I can answer them now, but everything, detail and what we do is in there. So, I mean, I hate rambling, but I do that a lot because I'm passionate about what I do, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Have a wonderful evening.
Okay, I'd like to call up Gail Weber. She'll be speaking on behalf of the Rotary and Chamber for Galtoberfest and the Shamrock Festival and Galt Street Fair. I've allowed her 15 minutes to cover the three, just all in one encompass.
I won't need that much time. Good evening, council and staff. I'm Gail Weber, and I am here representing the Galt Chamber of Commerce and the Galt Shop Local Committee. These two groups are now one, and we've been responsible for the Extravaganza, the Galt Summer Vendor Fair, the Lighting of the Night Vendor Fair, and the Galt Food Truck Mania. These have all been successful free community events. We'd like to propose adding two more community events for consideration by the city for sponsorship. We are also planning a fundraiser we would like the city to consider. We are planning the Shamrock Festival or the St. Patrick's Day Celebration for Saturday, March 16, 2019. We would like to revive parts of the old celebration from the past, such as renaming the city of Galt to the city of St. Patrick, the bed races, and painting the line green in Old Town, et cetera. There was also a jail, I think you could pay to have somebody put in, and then you had to bail them out. Food and vendors would be a part of this event. This would be a free community event, supported by sponsors and the vendor fees, and we would like to use the same basic setup on Fourth Street that was used for the Extravaganza. Our other community event would be the Galt Street Fair on Sunday, June 23, 2019. This would be modeled after the Lodi Street Fair, again, using the same basic setup as the Extravaganza. Both of these are new events to us. We are in the very early planning stages, so I don't have a lot of details of what we're looking to do, especially the Lodi, the Galt Street Fair, we're trying to pattern it after the Lodi Street Fair, so we have a lot of research to do. The one fundraiser we would do would be a partnership between the Galt Chamber of Commerce and the Galt Sunrise Rotary called the Galtoberfest. That would be planned for October 13 of 2018. The plan would be to utilize the Fourth Street Promenade and Fourth Street between B and C Street. We would bring in traditional German food vendors and German music, and we are looking using the Estralito's Courtyard as a beer garden. Fourth Street would need to be closed between B and C Street. This would be a paid admission event, raising monies for both the Chamber and the Galt Sunrise Rotary, monies which will be put back into the community by Galt Sunrise Rotary and the Chamber towards community events. Again, this is a brand-new event. All of these events are what make Galt a great place to live. Besides being fun, these events offer a host of economic and social benefits to our community. The benefits are similar to those for tourism. Tourism has the opportunity to bring communities together and install a sense of pride and knowledge of their history. The economic development, the economic benefits of our events are easy to see. Festivals and special events attract visitors, which stimulates the growth of tourism and other businesses in our town. Visitors spend money which boosts the local economy both on and off the event site. Festivals and special events also provide free marketing and advertising for our local businesses. The social benefits of festivals and special events are just as important as they foster community pride, teach people new things, and strengthen relationships. We believe that hometown pride is a critical factor in the development and improvement of any community. Residents with... Residents with community pride are more likely to speak positively about their town to others, and to volunteer with organizations and activities that support the common good. The mission of the Galt Chamber of Commerce and Galt Shop Local is to create economic opportunity and strengthen the business community by promoting economic vitality, influencing public policy, and promoting the welfare of our membership. We believe our festivals and special events do just that, and would ask the council to approve our special events request. Do you have any questions?
Just you're projecting attendance to be at 5,000 for the Shamrock, the Extravaganza, and the Street Fair? I don't think the Extravaganza's ever had an attendance of 5,000.
In 2016-
5,000 is a huge number that I, I, I really wonder whether our downtown could adequately address 5,000 people in attendance?
The 5,000 came from the 2016 Extravaganza, which I was told by several people was their estimated head count.
5,000 is what we get out at the-
5,000 is a bad flea market day.
Yeah, it's a bad flea market day, and the, and the-
Or, or a traffic that's completely filled. Good business day.
Yeah, so I, I just question whether 5,000, but, okay, sounds great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
So I'll return at the May 15th council meeting with, in the staff report, we'll have estimated costs for each one of the requests for street closures, monetary requests, and you guys will have an opportunity to make, ask questions at that point anymore.
When you do that, can you put it on a spreadsheet, similar to the-
Sure, I'll just add, I'll add a column to that and-
It beats mine. You know, my, my comment on, on this is, since, you know, it's an informational item, and you know, we're here to have give and take and ask questions. You know, I, I'd like to leverage the promenade as much as we can, because it, it costs less than to close a street down. The other thing for true transparency, which everybody demands of the city and us, ought to work both ways. And I, I believe going forward, we should actually have a, an accounting of, we had this event, and, you know, what's, what's their, their net? You know, what do they make out of it? What did it cost the city? So we have both numbers.
Also at the-
Going forward, I mean, I don't think we can, we can do it till we have an event, but I mean, in future years, going forward-
Also at the next, at the next council meeting, we'll have the recap of the 2018, fiscal 2018-year events. So you'll be able to see side-by-side comparisons of what they did last year and, and what they're requesting for 2019.
Yeah, because we're, we're basically talking nonprofit funds here and public funds.
Correct.
You know, so you, you're talking very transparent funds from, from, you know, both sides.
Each, each organization has filled out that funding form that we've requested, and you'll have, it'll be in your packet for you to review.
Yeah, I think it'd be, it'd be a handy tool for everybody to have.
And they'll act-
Because actually, the Galt Community Character Coalition is the only organization that's ever, until this, actually come forward and, and was very transparent about their books and what they made and what they did. Everybody else just, you know, wants the use of, wants public funds, but doesn't wanna be transparent about what they're actually doing with their public funds. So I think that's great.
Talking about public dollars, so, you know, have it transparent, both ways for everybody.
Well, I think that people wanna support, people wanna support the community, but they also, and then they support it by buying tickets and attending events and-
Absolutely.
And those kind of things, but, it's like I said, I'm-
Well, and-
Everybody I talk to wants safe streets.
Yeah, well, you help everybody in the long run, when you think about it, because it, it won't take, you know, but a couple cycles, and we'll be pretty sure what, what works and what doesn't, you know? And maybe that's where we wanna put more effort, what works.
Well, the, the point is, on, on the promenade, you know, the city has made a significant investment in that area-
Yes.
-for that purpose, to be utilized, and I, I think that's important to the extent possible. We should use it.
Yeah, and, and, you know, like FFA pointed out, you know, if there's, if there's certain improvements we can make to the promenade, now that we haven't really started using it that much, but when we do start using it more, if there's certain improvements we can make, only makes sense to, to build on that. And that's how we learn.
You can answer in two weeks, we're good.
Communication?
None.
City Clerk's Report, City Clerk's Association of California Annual Conference, Berkeley, California.
Yes, I'm just reporting out on the conference I attended, April 18th through the 20th in Berkeley. It's the annual conference. I think my, or the session where I learned the most was titled "Transitioning From At-Large to By-District Elections," which I'm sure Rich can, can understand. It was just two days, they had three speakers, they had a technical and a leadership track, and I chose the leadership track.
It seems like a lot of communities are going to district elections.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a certain population, or?
No, city's as small as Fort Bragg.
Oh, really?
Yes, yeah.
I kept thinking, oh, it has to be like a certain population before they go to district.
That's what, that's what I thought too, but-
Yeah, I did. I know Lodi's going to district. Okay, comments by staff. Mr. Winkler?
Well, I pride myself in being accurate, but I am not perfect, and I misstated a fact earlier as a fact, and I need to correct that, in the event you wanna change your vote on this whole source list. I, I kind of stated emphatically from memory that vast majority of the 11 new were related to water and wastewater. And had it been a year ago, when the previous list was done, that was a true statement. I got looking after the fact, and I realized that a lot of the, we, we pull, actually polled the other departments in the city, because this is not just a Public Works list, but we had a majority of the items, and we had some legacy items, playground equipment at various parks and things, and so the facts are that only three of the 11 items were related to water and wastewater. And six of them were basically ratifying existing playground systems and software and equipment vendors that the city has been using as legacy products, and trying to get them officially on the list. So I apologize for my speaking, and if that changes your thought, we can reconsider the item at your pleasure.
Doesn't change the list.
Now, you explained playground equipment in your report.
Chris?
Yeah, just a couple real quick items. I wanted to let you know, we did meet with the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee last week. We had three projects we presented to them, including, I think they requested revisions to the 4th Street Parking Plan, what Public Works had proposed. So that project was presented then, to them, as well as revisions to the Spawns Improvement Plan, their remaining building across from Velvet Creamery. There's one section of their building that was never completed as part of the facade upgrade, so they are proposing a upgrade, and that was presented to the commis, the committee. And another project, I think I had mentioned before, that we have a new development proposal at 7th and B for a townhome project, we presented that to them as well. And so it was a good discussion, good recommendations from the committee. Then one other item, the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan is gearing up. The environmental document was out for public review, that's completed. They're now starting to make the rounds for a recommendation of approval from the various committees and groups, and they're actually gonna be presenting to our Planning Commission next week. So they will come to city council at some point. I think they won't come to us, though, until after they go to their board for approval, and I believe that's gonna be, my guess is June or maybe even July, so toward the end of June. They're now looking also then to convene the Joint Powers Authority to start working with them, to hire an executive director and start getting the bones of that together. So it's an exciting time, it's been a long project, I think it will help the city, we've been a good participant in it, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Gene?
I have a couple items. First, I did learn after that presentation today that members of the Public Safety Committee and the Measure R Committee were here to also support me in receiving the award, and I didn't thank them, and so I, I wish I, I didn't know that in advance, but I do wanna publicly thank them. There's a couple committee members that are here, and I'll be reaching out to the other committee members and thanking them personally. April 28th, we had the Drug Takeback Program, that's through the DEA, it's, you know, all over our region. We had over 200 pounds of unused or unwanted drugs turned in for that event, huge success. We also had Police Department personnel at the Dia de los Niños event at the library on the 28th. Also, I wanna recognize Lieutenant Charles Diedrickson on May 3rd, he's officially retired, and today we had a, a nice event for him at the Police Department, and Mayor and City Manager and other members of the, of the city were there to recognize him after 28 years of service. And Property and Evidence Technician Lynn Hutchinson will be retiring on May 11th, so we'll be doing the same for her next Tuesday. Also, third, this Thursday, May 3rd, the Sacramento County Police Sheriff Memorial Service is going to be held. That's at Wood Lake Park, 500 Arden Way, the public is welcome. So we have a tremendous turnout to, to honor the fallen out of Sacramento County. Also, on Monday, May 7th, is the California State Police Officer Memorial at the State Capitol, that begins at, at 10:30 in the morning. And following that is, May 13th through 19th, is National Police Officer Memorial Week. And then the final item I have is, we had a Measure R Committee meeting on April 25th, so, but I don't have any items to report on that.
Gene?
Kim? Just, I'll be going to the City Attorney Conference, the League of Cities California, Cities City Attorney Conference this week, so looking forward to that, and we'll likely have a lot of interesting topics, like Donna had.
Kurt?
City Manager, do we have, we do have a report coming back, is it the next meeting or the following meeting on Measure R?
I believe we have scheduled Measure R for the next meeting.
May 15th.
June. Maybe June, do an update Measure R, it is on our 60-day calendar schedule.
Yes, okay.
Bring it back.
Okay, good, good.
Thank you. Tom?
I have nothing further.
Mark?
Just asking everybody's indulgence, they're still doing work out there for safe routes to school. It's really nice to see the work getting done, a lot of ADA compliance. Just bear with us, it takes a little time, but when it's done, you're gonna like it.
Hey, my street's done. The street out front. Looks great.
That's true, mine's done too.
Yeah. It's a big project.
Well, finally, because it was some rain in there, so-
Yeah.
Hopefully, the rest of it'll go a lot faster now.
Knock on wood, please.
Knock on, yeah, okay.
Okay, meeting adjourned.